Good evening. Now calling to order the Board of Education meeting for May 19th, 2022. The board met in closed session. No actions were taken. It was a discussion period only. Can I have? I don't mean to call on you without speaking to you first, but the coach of the swim team. Do you want to come up and lead us in the flag salute, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral and seated territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Tautivian, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Since my colleague, Dr. Weisberg, is not here. Ms. Clark, could you please take the role at this time?
I will. Member Frittner?
Present.
Member Aga Khanian?
Present.
Clerk Weisberg?
Vice President Ferguson?
Present.
And President Tabit?
President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, well, I already said number five, so we'll move on to number six. Anyone have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Oh, yes. We're going to pull 12E from the agenda.
It will be brought back June 2nd.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll also ask that we pull item 11B.
Okay. Everyone okay? All right, so 12E and 11B. Thank you so much. Also, at this time, we're going to move up Superintendent's comments as part of the adjustment to the board. Let me do future agenda items, and then we'll move it up. Any items for future agendas? Okay, that was easy. See none, then. We'll adjust if my colleagues are good, and we'll move to Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Tabit. We have two important announcements tonight that we wanted to highlight. First, we'd like to announce the new principal at Monterey High School. So I would ask that Dr. Paramo, please come to the microphone.
Good evening, President Tabit, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, and community. It is my honor and pleasure to announce the new principal at Monterey High School, Mrs. April Weaver. April, if you could come up, please. April started working in Burbank in 2002 at Luther Burbank Middle School. She spent 10 years there teaching English, social studies, and science in the special education program. After teaching, April moved to the special education department at the district office, where she was the program specialist of secondary education and helped create strong special education programs throughout the district, including Monterey, Magnolia Park, and CDS. After working at the district office, April became the assistant principal at Dolores Huerta Middle School and currently is at Monterey High School. In her time with Burbank Unified, April has always been an advocate for all students and families. Her goal is that every student in Burbank has the opportunity to support, to earn a diploma, and have the education and skills needed in order to achieve their personal success. I am so excited to have April be part of our principal team, and I know she's going to do amazing. April, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Board President Tabit, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Hill, district staff, and everybody in the audience. I am so thankful that I have the opportunity to be the principal of Monterey High School. I've been at Monterey High School for three years, and I realize that every day, the students walk under a sign on the front door that says "Second Chance for Success." As principal, I want every student to know that they do have a second chance, but they also have a third, a fourth, a fifth, and however many chances it's going to take in order to have success. We will keep supporting them and helping them achieve their goals. But it's not, the sign, I don't think is just for students. I think that sign is for all of us in this room as well. The next time you're at Monterey, I hope that sign reminds you that we now have a second chance to show all these students that school can be a positive and wonderful place, and that we have a second chance to help each one of them learn that learning is fun, and that when life knocks you down, you can get back up and keep moving towards your goals, even if you're taking a different path. Thank you again for giving me this chance and to lead Monterey in the amazing work that they do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo, and welcome. Or, it's not a welcome, it's just returning back and moving to a different office and, you know, a few extra duties added to your list, I'm sure, but Monterey's an outstanding place. The leadership there under David Guyer was amazing, and as his teammate, I'm sure that same pathway of success will continue. So best of luck to you, and you know, we're all here supporting you, and whatever pathway leads us down, we're here. So thank you. Do my colleagues wish to speak? I know.
Just a major congratulations. When I started on the board, you were at Huerta. Oh, please stay, you know, you've had a long day working, please stay seated. When I started on the board, you were at Huerta, and, you know, there was a great deal of buzz. Oh, well, you got to talk to April. April Weaver, she's going to help you out. When it comes to, especially our sped parent community, always, she's such a resource. You need to connect with her. What is she doing that's right? And since then, I've seen your kind of fingerprints move on and seen them really take en route at Monterey. And, you know, Mr. Guyer brought his flavor and his leadership style, too, and without a doubt, that is there, and that's been serving kids very, very well. But I am so excited to see what you're bringing to the role. Without a doubt, two major institutions just left that role through retirement and through moving. But again, I think you not only have a campus community behind you, you have the community as a whole who has seen your tenure and who appreciates how hard you fight for kids. So really excited to see you in this new role and wishing you the very, very best.
Thank you. Mr. Frittner?
Yes. I'll second what my colleague said. Just congratulations. We're really happy to have you moving into that role. When you started at Monterey and, you know, David was starting as principal, it was, I thought, just a really perfect fit. What you said about the school is absolutely correct. At our last meeting, we had some students, you know, speaking, and we talked then about what a real jewel this school is for our district. And I think you will help, you know, maintain and expand on that going forward. We're so excited to have you there, so congratulations.
Dr. Aga Khanian?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, and, you know, I think you should change that sign and add a third or fourth. And I mean it because I am one of those students. Had I not given it a second or a third chance, I'd not be where I am today. So I appreciate all your hard work and looking forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you. And you said, Dr. Hill, you had two.
The second exciting announcement, well, it's not an announcement, but a recognition for the John Burrows High School swim team, who are CIF champions. So if we could have Coach Cook and the entire team and coaching staff come up, then we recognize.
Hey, thank you all for having us here today. Sorry, I don't know the individual introductions, but thank you all. My name is Jacob Cook. I'm the head coach of the Burrows Aquatics Programs, and I'm just here to introduce the girls' swim team and to acknowledge their recent Division IV CIF championship. They did an absolutely phenomenal job, and we're so proud of what they achieved. The girls scored 199 points to win the meet, besting the second-place team by 58 points. And to put that into perspective, the girls got first place in their division, outscoring the 51 other teams competing at the meet. So pretty impressive. And there have only been two other CIF championships of any sport in the Burrows School history, so with these girls now being one of them. So a great job to them, so. And then just a quick introduction, we have our two seniors, Liliana and Kelly Long, Liliana Noriega and Kelly Long, and then our junior Nancy Baylor, and then our two freshmen, Camila Guillermo and Abigail Chitalian. So, and then this is also the other coach at Burrows, this is Martin Ortega-Jenison. So, thank you. And thank you again for having us.
Well, thank you, Coach, for coming and bringing your team. We're awfully proud of our teams and student athletes in the district, and it's really nice when we can come in with a big plaque like that and show off a little bit. All these ladies' hard work, and yours as well, so thank you so much. I'm sure my colleagues have something to say as well.
Just congratulations. I really know the time and effort that needs to be put into succeeding on that level in any athletic pursuit. As you mentioned, it's very rare for either of our high schools to win a CIF championship, so rising to that level is incredible. I know swimmers are usually swimming at the crack of dawn and, you know, and working, you know, just, you know, throughout the day and hours and hours, so it just shows an incredible amount of dedication, so congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, yes, please.
Forty million people in this state, and we bring home the trophy. So that is because of you, and that's pretty incredible and pretty amazing, but also, as your coach mentioned, we've brought home CIFs before, but probably not with this mascot. So, you know, way to make history, way to represent our community well, and we're very proud of you, but this clearly is just the beginning for a bunch of talented athletes. So wishing you good luck and keep representing Burbank as you continue to climb.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate our team, and I hope that if the scouts are watching this, there are some future scholarship opportunities here for some of the major universities. So congratulations. This is a big deal, so hats off to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, and thank you again, everyone, for coming. Number eight, reports from the board. Eight A is a new board agenda item brought to us by Dr. Weisberg, in which a board of education member will provide a highlight from one of the Burbank Unified School District's school sites. So I get the honor of being first, and I want to thank again Dr. Weisberg for her work on this, it's appreciated. So the first one goes to, and we're doing this in alphabetical order, so don't, there's not a priority list, it's just alphabetical. Bret Hart Elementary, one of our 11 phenomenal elementary schools, which is led by the skilled leadership of Principal Martha Walter, curriculum specialist Nicole Cody, at-risk interventionist Michael Jones, ELD specialist Kirsten Jackson, RSP specialist Sarah Matsui Von Goetsau, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, and the amazing teachers. Some of their programs include Read Across America, Tech Talk Night, their annual book fair, and their gardening rotation, which includes garden basics, garden creatures, edible gardening, native plants, composting, and waste management. They also hold their Red Ribbon Week, which focuses on taking a visible stand against drugs. The school also infuses STEAM instruction, such as art and photography, which helps build community. On April 29th, the school held its third annual magic show. Some exciting upcoming events include the 5th grade party on May 20th and the 5th grade commencement ceremony on May 24th. So thank you, thank you to Dr. Weisberg, and that was our everyday excellence of Bret Hart Elementary. Moving on to 8B, student representative reports. We'll start with Owen Vavado from Monterey High School. Are you here, Owen? Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Hill, district staff, and our lovely audience. In Monterey, we are now finishing up the last week of school. Only four and a half days left. Honestly, it feels like forever ago that I started there. And I would like to congratulate Ms. Otis, who is in the audience, for finishing our yearbook in less than a quarter, and it looks phenomenal. And this week, we have also started our spirit week, and our first annual field day will be held tomorrow at Nutrition from, I believe, like, 10:30 to 11, 12:00 PM, sorry. But we'll be having a whole bunch of activities, like volleyball, relay race, and different little challenges. And the winners will be getting a free pie-in-the-face ticket to pie one of our amazing staff in the face. Hopefully, it's not personal. And next week's, tomorrow's spirit week, will be gym wear day, and they'll have to wear just anything sportsy or what they would wear to the gym. Last week, we also had a Holocaust survivor come to our school, and it was an amazing experience. And honestly, I feel like it's a one-in-some-lifetime experience to have this sort of thing, and it was really wonderful to have them come to our school. And the name was Joseph Alexander. They are nearly 100 years old, and he survived about 17 concentration camps, which is amazing. And it's really a feat of humanity to go through that sort of trauma. And I really, it's amazing, and I honestly don't know what else to say for him. It's just amazing. I use amazing a lot. And I would also like to congratulate Ms. Weaver, wherever she is, wherever she left to. I've been with her since Lourdes Huerta, when we were Cougars, and she was amazing. And honestly, I'm really happy for her that she's now the principal. And we also have another special member of our staff who is taking some CTE classes for child development to help our district and other schools in Burbank, which is amazing. I'm sure whoever that is knows who they are, so congratulations again. And I would like to close out the announcement by saying thank you all for having me here for a wonderful school year, and it's been amazing. And I would like, any questions?
Can I just say I think you're amazing?
Thank you. Thank you. I try my best.
We know, and we appreciate it. And I love that you brought your own fan club tonight. That's awesome.
I didn't plan this, so.
Oh, roll with it, it's okay.
Yeah.
You got it. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Take care.
You, too.
We will next have Ms. Jewel Reader from John Burrows High School.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. First, I'll start off by reporting on recent events that have happened this month. First, we had our college week this week, which was hosted by CPMs, College Pre-mentors. On Monday, students shredded their stress by shredding college rejection letters, bad grades, et cetera. On Tuesday, seniors got donuts for reporting their post-JBHS plans, whether that be four-year college, community college, the military, et cetera. On Wednesdays, senior painted handprints and wrote what their future plans are going to be on a piece of paper. On Thursday, there was a tailgate with games and root beer floats in the front of school. And Friday, seniors are invited to put small items into our Class of 2022 time capsule. Also this week was, the senior class had their senior brunch, where seniors were excused from periods one through three. Department awards were given, grad night and graduation procedures were explained, the senior slideshow was shown, breakfast burritos were served, there were games, there was yearbook signing, and cabin gown pickup. We also want to congratulate yearbook for finishing their yearbook, it looks amazing. And we had not only, we not only had JBHS students, but also Monterey and ILA students in attendance. Last Friday, the mental health board hosted Green Day, where students wore green in support of mental health awareness, and the club sold green ribbons to donate to a teen mental health nonprofit. The Student Outreach Committee hosted Red Day today on Thursday in support of Asian American Heritage Month. Our senior awards night was this Monday, where students and families were invited to recognize their student successes inside and outside of the classroom. Students received scholarships and recognition awards from countless community members. We had our last signing day for athletes on May 4th, earlier this month. Gunnar Nichols signed to play baseball at Pepperdine University, Gigi Garcia signed to CSU Dominguez Hills softball, Mason Medina to CSU San Marcos baseball, Clarissa Robles to Sienna College water polo, and Abby Dixon to Pace University volleyball. Many seniors are also being recognized on the marquee in front of school for their college decision, and we are so proud of all of our amazing seniors. Upcoming, tomorrow's grad night. Bus lists were posted online in front of school. All seniors attending grad night are required to get COVID tested before going on the bus, and masks will be required on all the buses. All students are meeting at JBHS at 4:00 PM for bus pickup, and will be back at school around 3:00 to 4:00 AM for bus drop-off. Unfortunately, yet very fortunately, at the same time, our boys' baseball team will not be attending grad night because they will be playing their Division V championship game on the Cal State Fullerton Field. We're so proud of our baseball team and how far they have gone this season. And also, our girls' softball team had a spectacular season, making it to semifinals. And of course, our girls' swim team, which we heard from, won their, the Division League champ title for the third time in Burrows' history. Also upcoming is graduation, of course. All seniors were given five graduation tickets each, and gates for the event will open at 4:00 PM, and the ceremony will start at 6:00 PM. We also want to congratulate our Black Student Union for their assembly that was given on Wednesday. This assembly was really great and showed Black excellence and Black joy, which we hope to see in the coming years. And lastly, our student faculty luncheon is this Friday, and it is picnic-themed. There will be food and treats for faculty and students, and their student guests, in order to thank them for all the work they have done throughout this year. Thank you to all in attendance. It's been an honor serving on this board. I really appreciate the opportunity, and I can answer any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Jewel. Our next speaker is Shoshana Tropetrocian from Burbank High School.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, and senior staff. Today, May 19th, 20th, and 21st, our Vocal Music Association will present Feel It. This is the first live pop concert in three years at the Wilson Auditorium at 7:00 PM. This is the last show of the school year, so you do not want to miss it. We hope to see support from our Burbank community. Burbank Kai's Creative Writing Club and Art Club have collaborated on another issue of Pope Pari, BHS's literary magazine. Attached to an announcement in each grade-level Google Classroom is a PDF of the magazine, where you can read the original works of our student authors and view artwork made by our student artists. The senior class members of the animation program were celebrated at a bash that was held at the Nickelodeon Studios last night. The screening included the best animated short films of the year and a special project created within the animation program. Congratulations to Ms. Pickett and her students for another outstanding year. On the 17th, there was a signing day at lunch in the quad, where we congratulated graduating seniors who will continue to play their sports in college. With the school year coming to a close, there are many senior activities. Faculty Excellence Awards will be shown on BHS TV at 6:00 PM on the 23rd. Graduation practice and walkthrough will be on the 24th and 25th. Top Dog and Senior Award Night will be on the 24th at 6:00 PM in the quad. Grad Night will be on the 25th, where buses will depart at 9:30 AM. And senior slideshow will be on the 26th in the auditorium. But last but not least, graduation is on the 27th at 6:00 PM, where seniors will be walking on a stage, and I hope to see you all there. To end off my report, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to report on Burbank Kai every other Thursday. I've learned and grown so much from this opportunity, and I commend you all for doing such an amazing job this year, especially with the hardship like COVID. To be honest, I wouldn't be able to handle it, thank you. Thank you all for your support and constant interest in our school and student body. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to presentations and recognitions, we will now recognize the 2021-2022 student board members. Jewel Reader from John Burrows, Owen Vavado from Monterey High, and Shoshana Tropetrocian from Burbank High School. So can you all meet me at the podium? I really want to take a minute to thank our student board members. It is such an honor and a privilege to be able to have students on our board and get perspective and hear what's going on at your prospective campuses. You're amazing. Thank you for that word. You're amazing, all that you do, the work you put in, your own classwork, your own lives, and then how much more you put into making our schools a place where students want to come to every day, part of that reason. But thank you for that. And, I mean, I love hearing about all the fun activities and how creative you all are. So the board gives you a plaque that will live in perpetuity forever. It needs to go on every wall in every home you live in because, yes, because, you know, there's only three student board members per year, and as Jewel said, as Shoshana said, as Owen said, it's an honor, and it's an honor for us to have you, so thank you. I'm sure my other board members will speak.
Okay, let me get a couple, just in case. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the fun stuff so far. Yes, let's have some board comments. Mr. Ferguson, please.
Thank you. I feel like the student board members are coming faster and faster and rotating through, so as I've been on the board now... So as, as I've been on the board now for a bit of time. So first, I want to welcome you all to the Burbank Unified School District Student Board Member Alumni Association, because you have successfully made it. We are proud not just to present you with these plaques, but to also inscribe your name on the plaque at the district office, which has a record of all of our, our student, former student board members. To Shoshana's point a little bit, this is not an easy time to lead. And whether or not you're dealing with public education, or graduation stages, or places to sit at lunch, or schedules. It's a hard time. People are all sorts of places right now. And so whether you're up here, or whether you are doing the work in the ground like you all, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and personally, and, and how wonderful it's been hearing your feedback and your spin, and really, the way you see your school, not the way I see it, or the way that most people, but your paradigm and your perspective on, on school. You are leaving school after some really hard years. And that makes you a unique class of individual that can choose to take that experience and build with it, or get destructive with it, frankly, because there's a lot of pain, right? We see that pain all the time. We're running into it all the time. But I know, after working with you guys this year, how much you care, and how much you are invested in the future and doing it right, and coming out of this stronger. We may not always have the tools to figure it out in the moment, but education is about giving you the basics. And when it comes to what Burbank Unified has done for all of you, mission accomplished. You go forward, and just like the swim team, right, you will represent us in new ways. I have that plaque still at home, too. And it reminds me of just how leadership, even when we rotate out of these positions, still remains a responsibility. So welcome to the club. I am so excited to celebrate you as you continue to grow and climb. We say this all the time. Nobody takes advantage of it. I don't know why nobody wants to hang out with us. But if you ever want to come back and hang out, we're here. Every other Thursday, you know where we are. But also, don't hesitate to reach out if we can help you keep climbing. Because that is our job as a community, not to just get you up and over and get you your diploma, but to continue to celebrate you as you represent the very best of our investments here at home. So, love you all, and have a great graduation. You, you'll still be around, so I'll harass you a little bit more. But otherwise, welcome to the family.
Thank you. Mr. Fritner?
Thanks. As Mr. Ferguson touched on, we've had a really great tradition of student board members over the years. And all three of you have really fulfilled that, that lineage, so to speak. We were talking a little bit early before the start of the meeting, that this was really another challenging year. And even to be a student board member during this time was, was very tough. But, and again, as Mr. Ferguson touched on, you were all still, you know, active. You were representing your schools well. You were, you were dealing with the issues at your schools and bringing them here, so we could hear it as well. And that, I, I think, just points out that the kind of people you are. And I, I, I fully expect you to continue on as leaders as you move through the rest of your life, no matter which path you take. We do always invite board members to come back. Shocking that none of them want to come to a meeting. But we do see them sometimes. Again, I was just mentioning one of our former board members, student board members, just graduated from George Washington University yesterday. And I run into him during the summer sometimes. Much better to see you then. But, but you are always welcome back here. And yes, and please feel free to connect with us anytime. If you, you know, you obviously have great support systems already, I'm sure, at home. But if there's something that a board member perspective might help with, you know, don't be afraid to reach out. So congratulations on your year, and we look forward to hearing more about, more about you in the years to come.
Thank you. Dr. Agarconian?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I think my colleagues covered some of the areas, but I also want to remind everyone, at least for me, you know, being during these difficult times, having that glimmer of hope, having seen you there, giving this positive news, positive feedbacks, really, really made me more hopeful, because it's been very difficult for all of us, and I understand how difficult it's been for you. But every time that you come and give these reports, you know, for me, at least personally, you know, I can, not only, it, it gives me that little light, because at the end of the tunnel, because it's been difficult, but also, I think it really reassures what the reason why we're here, working and making sure that you finish your education and move on to better endeavors. I am so proud of, you know, all of our current and past board presidents, board members from the schools, you know. But also, more important, that's all, I want to remind you that, you know, we're going to be here for all your future endeavors, you know. And I know, again, as my colleague said, both of them, you know, this is sometimes, you know, we won't see you, but I, we know that you're out there. And, you know, I want to make sure that you understand that, you know, your, all your hard work, and all your hard work is what makes this district so wonderful. This is what makes this, our school so wonderful. Because hopefully, one day, you will be sitting here, and maybe my son, or our son, will be representing his school. And that, to me, you know, no matter how difficult our times been, that glimmer of hope is what makes, you know, our district so wonderful. So thank you for all your hard work, and just know that no matter what, you can always call us, email us, we'll be there for you. And please keep us updated. We want to know where you are and how things are, and love to see you back once in a while. So thank you for all you do, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Agarconian. Okay. I, I do, I did thank you profusely down there, but I, I, one thing that really tickled me today, and I think, Owen, you mentioned your yearbook advisor and how she put together a yearbook in a short amount of time. Both of you, you know, talked about your yearbook advisors at your high school. It has to be one of the most difficult jobs in the world to be the yearbook advisor and put together a book this thick that's supposed to commemorate the year and get everyone's name right, and get everybody's photo attached, you know, correctly to their name, so on and so forth. So that, those advisors and those students who work on that book, I mean, big kudos to them. It, it's hours upon hours upon hours. As an old retired yearbook advisor, it's a lot of work. So thank you for what you do. Thank you to your yearbook advisors at your schools, because that is a piece of history that goes home with students and lives forever. I, I am 57 years old, and I still pull out my high school yearbook to say, wait, I know that name, or I remember this person. And, and you, you jog your memory from a long time ago, so those books live on forever. So thank you for all of those who do that very difficult work. It's appreciated, and usually not, no one's usually thanking them. So it's about time, right? So thank you for remembering that, you three. You were great. All right, moving on. More good things. Presentation on Burbank Arts and Education Foundation's Spring 2022 Grant Cycle. Mrs. Casal?
Thank you, President Tabit. I'd like to introduce Alexandra Helfrich, the Grants and Giving Chair for the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. She's going to report on the spring grant cycle. And we also have the co-chairs of the foundation, Ms. Anna Connell and Brenda Ederbeek.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and BUSD Administration. Welcoming our co-chairs, as well as joining us in the audience, I believe, quite possibly, I haven't met some of these people personally, so I'm guessing, are Sarah Header, representing the Roosevelt Elementary Library, and Terry Williamson, the curriculum specialist from Roosevelt. Patricia Valenciana and Jackie Hackbarth are here from Emerson. And Luther, art teacher, Deborah Zesenyah Rubio, and Burrows High School Photography Teacher, Cara Clark. Today, the Burbank Arts and Education is delighted to announce funding of almost $50,000 in the Spring 2022 Grants and Giving Cycle. Thank you. This really is one of our two favorite days of the year. Highlights of elementary grant investments include art supplies and materials, including a kiln, diverse classroom and library book collections, critical math interventions for at-risk students, school site safety and social emotional support, and mindful and adaptive seating options. Middle schools will benefit from block printing art supplies and materials, safety tools for busy drop-off and pickup times, and site-wide professional development and curriculum in social and emotional learning. The high schools received funding for art studio seating, instruments and sheet music, and technology support for an athletic program, for a total amount in grant giving of $29,681.22. But this spring, the foundation is especially excited to give funding of up to $20,000 to provide class sets of ukuleles to the seven elementary schools that currently do not have instrumental music instruction. This gift was inspired by a grant application from Emerson Elementary School, asking for ukuleles for their site. After discussing this need at Emerson, we were encouraged by our BUSD advisors to consider all of the seven elementary schools who also needed instruments. In response, we're really proud to be able to partner with the Burbank Unified School District for the purchase of ukuleles, strings, and tuners for the seven elementary schools that currently don't have the instruments. Beginning in fall 2022, every fourth and fifth grader will have instrumental music instruction district-wide for the first time in decades. We hope this is the beginning of an equity model that we may be able to follow in the future as needs are identified and funding is available. The Burbank Arts and Education Foundation strongly believes that every child deserves a high-quality public education, and one of the key markers of that is elementary music instruction for every student. Our mission is to help fill the gaps in education, funding, and site-based parent fundraising. And we're grateful for the guidance from our BUSD administration advisors and stressing the need to provide equity during our grant review process. We're inspired by the creativity, excellence, and passion from educators who continue to support our children during the most challenging times. And please join me in supporting their work by donating to the foundation at BurbankArtsAndEd.org. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alexandra, for, for your, the foundation's generosity, for seeing the big picture, looking for what needs are, and remembering that equity is important for our students to understand. And now this opportunity for everyone is outstanding. So for me personally, thank you. I'm sure there's some board members who would like to say thank you as well. Dr. Agarconian?
Thank you very much. I do want to thank you and all the members for their hard work. And for our viewers who don't know, I just want to comment about how professional your services are. I do the monthly deduction, and as someone who runs another foundation, I can tell you the level of professionalism, how consistent you are, the letters, you know. And I want to encourage all of our viewers, you know, if you can't afford, you know, a big donation, you can go $5 a month, $10 a month. It's less than a cup of coffee, right? But people forget that those numbers, when they accumulate, they, you know, generate some of the needs that our students really have there. And people forget, you know, grants out there necessarily don't cover some of these areas. And people have to remember, it's more difficult to get unrestricted funds when it comes to doing some programs, because there are certain grants that are just very specific. I still have my lawn sign.
Thank you.
It's getting old, but it's there, you know. It's been there almost for a year, so I think maybe a second cycle, you know.
I see you got the hint.
Yeah. But, but, yeah, thank you. But I also want to remind everyone that this organization is volunteer-driven, you know, and that's very important. And then I think people have to realize that the more we do, more of these programs we can have when it comes to our students. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, because I know how difficult it is to raise money, especially in today's environment, especially what's happening with the markets. Hopefully, they'll bounce back, but you know, and, but I want to thank you. And, and I want to see more of this, and I want to see more people donating. If you can announce your website again to people where they can donate, that'd be fantastic.
Our website is BurbankArtsAndEd.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First things first, to pile on a little bit with what Dr. Agarconian said. First, just thank you for the work. So first, I do want to acknowledge Ms. Ederbeek, who I think this is the first time you may be coming to a board meeting as a co-chair, a new co-chair of the foundation. So. So I want to thank you for taking on that responsibility. Ms. Connell continues on with her responsibility here. And to Ms. Helfrich, who, you know, frankly, was there with a different foundation in the beginning, who was a part of this grant cycle and, and creating and bringing this grant cycle to us, that has really sustained programming, provided seed funding, frankly, and transformed how we deliver education, specifically in the arts area. Ukuleles, as, as fun as the word is to say, as, as fun, and it's huge. It's huge in this moment to be able to still, to have partners who are able to go, there's a hole, let's fill it. Are you guys good? We're game? You game? Okay, let's move forward, and let's accomplish this together. And, and that happened. I cannot thank you enough for, for looking at the grant opportunities, identifying an opportunity that existed beyond just the grant cycle, and seizing the moment to deliver for kids. That's huge. And that's the kind of partnership we need. Again, absolutely, foundations are volunteer-run. And doing it, again, in a, in a time of pandemic, and raising funds right now, as people are stabilizing their lives again, or attempting to, is hard. It's also a hard time to determine where you're going and vision, as everybody's priorities are piling on in a world that is pulling for attention in a million different ways. So again, to the citizen leadership and the volunteers that are making BAEF deliver and continue to deliver for kids. My sincerest thanks as an elected representative of this community for your hard work, for the tears and the stress. I know it exists. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And, and I hope that whether you are a donor, like Dr. Agarconian, who gives $5 and has old lawn signs out to show support, or if you are a board member who are in kind of the, the weeds of this decision-making, when you go by a classroom, if you happen to hear ukuleles, I want you to remember that was your part. I want you to remember that you enriched an experience of a young person in this community, and we get one shot at that. So thank you for being a part of that.
Mr. Fritner?
Thank you. Thank you again. I'll be echoing a little bit of what my colleagues have already said, but it needs to be said again. BAEF has continued to show their generosity in supporting programs in the district. Everything you'd mentioned, you know, tonight are fantastic. You know, things that are happening on our campuses that you're enabling and supporting. But I do have to also touch back on the, on the, the fact that when a suggestion came up, instead of just fulfilling that one need, the discussions took place, and the, the realization that there was a, a need beyond the initial ask within the district that could bring equity to our elementary schools, and you were there to provide it. And, and Ms. Connell and Ms. Ederbeek, and your entire board, that's really the, the kind of partnership that we've been talking about all along with our, with, you know, with our foundation partners. And this is really fulfilling that, that need in a very direct, oh, excuse me, a very direct way. So that's just fantastic. And so I, we, again, can't thank you enough and look forward to continuing and expanding on this going forward.
Thank you.
Just quick, for the record, I do give more than $5 a month.
We know, we know.
I just did my taxes, so you know, it is a write-off, so.
Thank you for that.
I want to remind you and the community of something too, how you especially have immersed yourself in the arts in Burbank. It was about 16, maybe 17 years ago, when I was PTA president at Jefferson, Ruth Bane and Martinez was the booster club president, and you came to our boards and you said, I want to go for this art grant, and I need, I think you needed $5,000 from each of us, and this art grant, this was all you. You pushed this through and was the beginning of the type of foundation work where we are now. And you've, you're still here, and you, and you haven't left. And it takes really that kind of dedication, and the rest of your board that has dedicated themselves as well, but it was you that, that started this. And I just really want to thank you for that. And thank you for still being here, even though your children are long since, well, not long, but have since graduated, and I appreciate that on behalf of all our students in Burbank Unified. So thanks. I haven't forgotten, Alexandra.
You are all too kind, and thank you very, very much. We would, this would not have happened without the collaboration and the suggestions and the support of everybody here. So we're really grateful to all of you. This is a true partnership. Thank you.
Now, request, yes, enjoy your, your week. Request to address the board. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item by completing a white request card and turning in to Ms. Clark. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. Any individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction during one of the three public comment sections. Do we have any virtual speakers this evening?
We do not.
We do not, okay. I'm going to skip for the virtual part. So the first speaker that I have this evening is Linda Wamsley, followed by Armine Zaragarian.
Good evening. I have some prepared remarks tonight, but I, I just quickly want to say, I haven't been here for a while, and this turned out to be just a joyful experience for me. First, Kelly Long, former student of mine, is a swimmer, so that was joyful. Jennifer Fagnani, sitting in the audience, is going to speak later, and the last year watching, turning in, you know, I don't think a lot of people say Thursday night, oh goodness, board meeting. I do, and one of the reasons I've done that is that guy right there. He started with me in room eight, and he is speaking and speaking and speaking a lot in kindergarten, and he still does it today. So seeing Owen Vivado every Thursday night has just been joyful for me, and seeing what he has done with his life just lets me know that learning to read in kindergarten was a good thing. You can go now, I'll let you go now, okay? So, good evening. One of the items on your agenda tonight is the approval of the Administrative Regulation Regarding Advanced Placement Classes and Testing. As you know, last year I worked to raise funds for AP testing for students that faced economic challenges. Thanks to many generous donors, I was able to have some success. Got to take my glasses off so I can see this. I have heard from those students that benefited from these funds. They were grateful, and the support is helping them to fulfill their goals for an education that will lead them to become productive citizens. Well, I'm here tonight to let you know that I'm going to give it the old college try once again this year. I am hopeful that I can not only match, but maybe succeed what was donated last year. Letters to all of those that contributed last year will go in the mail tomorrow, and I am also sending out emails to over 100 contacts. The best news is, thanks to Dr. Paramo and Alyssa Lo, there is now a specific donate button on the district's website for this purpose. It's easy to access. All you do is go to the BUSD homepage, click on Community, then Fundraising Committees, and scroll down to the AP Testing section. I am happy to report that Burroughs alumni Sean Dugan made the first online donation this week, and checks payable to BUSD are still a viable way to donate. In fact, Ms. Kaktah, here's my donation. Once again, Ruthie DeFonzo is going to account for these donations, and I will personally thank all donors. So wish me luck. Thank you for your time.
And my apologies, the next speaker is Armine Zaragarian, followed by Catherine Fignani.
My name is Armine Zaragarian. I'm a mother of three children. I have a bachelor's and a master's of science degree in early childhood education and adolescence development. I would like to know what item number 12B, adopting the adoption of the Resolution 44 in support of Pride Month, June 2022, is going, is going to mean for our students, for our What are our children going to be exposed to? I would like some clarity and some transparency as to what that means for young children, for our adolescents, and for our high school students. Majority of parents want their children's childhood and innocence protected. Children should focus on academics. Children and adolescents need to be busy with schoolwork, academic projects, events such as robotic competitions, playing the ukulele, concerts, sports, et cetera. Parents who feel like their voices are not heard, for instance, during the pandemic and the push for the vaccination of children, we felt like our voices weren't being heard. So we, we demonstrated it by hitting your bottom line. We, I remember there were three days I didn't send my kids to school, and the majority of the people who saw it on social media kept their kids at home, and it hit your bottom line, we didn't hear about vaccinating kids anymore. So if need be, you know, just listen to us, be transparent, and, you know, keep things school-related. The LGBTQ community keeps promoting the sexualization of children and teens and claims all content under the LGBTQ umbrella is gender-related, but L, G, B, think about what that means, is not gender-related, it's actually sexual orientation. They also claim that children are committing suicide because they're not represented. According to the National Library of Medicine, children who have been exposed to sexuality have been consistently associated with suicidal behavior. This statistic refers to studies of suicide attempt featured in depressed individuals who were sexualized as children. The LGBTQ community claims that queer kids are bullied. Unfortunately, lots of children on our campuses are bullied. As long as we have war on earth, there will be bullying in our campuses. So the question is, how are we going to help these children? Our students need quality counselors and therapists to help them, help the bullies understand how to cope and communicate with their problems, the bullied to how, to know how to stand up for themselves, and to be able to cope with difficult life situations. Sexualizing children is not the answer to these problems. And single-subject high school and middle school teachers are not licensed, are not trained to counsel children. We need real counselors and real therapists. Young children have one thing on their mind, and I've spent many years observing children. I've worked in lab schools where one, two-way mirrors, people were watching me work with children. They have one thing on their mind: play. They like to play. Ask any child on the playground in an elementary school, what do you like to do? What's your favorite part of the recess? They like to play, that's the one thing on their mind, allow them to be children and play. On behalf of all the mothers who will protect their children's innocence, I have a message for you, for all the educators at Burbank Unified. Do not sexualize our children. I repeat, do not dare sexualize our children. Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Fignani, followed by Rosemary Morrison.
Good evening, BUSD Board of Education. My name is Catherine Fagnani, and I am a junior at Monterey High School. I'm here once again to talk about the potential schedule change at Monterey. I would like to extend a personal thank you to each and every member for truly listening to me at a couple weeks ago meeting. I, I really have never felt more heard, and it felt amazing just to hear all the great feedback you had. Today, I have brought with me a petition created by me and my amazing teachers who have come to support me. This petition states that anyone who signs does not agree to a schedule of 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. and would instead prefer to keep our current schedule of 8:45 to 1:40 p.m. I have 100% of the returning student signatures, including both 10th and 11th graders of this year. On top of that, I have 97% of the senior student body signature as well. We don't want this change. No student, teacher, or parent at Monterey supports this change. We want our schedule to stay the same. Monterey provides an important and valuable alternative to those who cannot succeed with a normal schedule. This school is a tool that the board can provide to students who need extra support. As I said before at the last meeting, the attendance and grades are up, and in turn, so is our graduation rate. This year alone, 50% of Monterey's senior class graduated by the second quarter. Making this schedule change will lead to a decrease of attendance, grades, and overall student attendance. This change will create absolutely no difference between Burroughs and Burbank. My experience at Monterey has changed my life and will continue to benefit my overall success. This school is unique, and changing a program that everyone on campus loves is a horrible mistake. I don't know how else to fight and defend my school, but I won't go down without a fight. Although Monterey has only 90 students, that does not mean we can be brushed off, and we will make sure that we are heard. All we are asking is to stop the change and to stop the train that has been set in motion. I hope you can see the damage this will happen to the students. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you can see the true joy and passion that the school has given, not only to me, but to the hundreds of students who got a second chance at Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And our last speaker, Rosemary Morrison.
It's been so long since I've seen you all. Hi, I'm Rosemary Morrison.
And so long since we've seen in person.
That's true, because I just, who did I just see? Yes. I came to talk about one thing, but I just, I'm sorry, I got really heated a little while ago. Our LGBTQ community is not sexualizing children, and I hate that you came up and you said that. You are wrong, and your research, wherever that came from, is wrong. So do not tell people that they are doing that, because you know what sexualizes children? The things you let them do, parenting, but children who are born that way, no, I'm going to address you, because people who are born that way do not sexualize children. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry.
I know, but you do need to address us. You can speak your mind, but you need to address us.
And to have her say that really upsets me on so many levels, and I just, sorry, I'm sorry. I will go back to my preferred, my reason why I'm up here. I've come to talk about Walt Disney's building. We are so excited, we are in our new building, but, there is a but. I, the last two weeks have been really hard. Moving, last two weeks of school, has been stressful for our staff, our teachers, and I'm still shaking because I'm angry, but, and I just wanted to come up here and tell you that. I feel like every email we get from the district says, if you have mental health, if you have stress issues, please reach out, and this move has been really hard. And I don't know if you all understand that. We were told different moving dates, we were told we would move on Saturday, we did not move on, half of us did not move on Saturday. You had people moving their own rooms. Peter, God love you, and Molly were there on Sunday, moving teachers so that they can be ready to start the day. And I just want you to acknowledge that. I want you to acknowledge that our building is not perfect. I mean, I joked with one of the guys today, I was like, all these things are so wrong with my building, and he's like, oh, it was customized for you, and I was like, oh! So I'm back in another falling-down building, thanks! So it really, it didn't upset me. I'm joking, it did upset me, because I'm like, my room is not completely done, so that's another thing. And when we come back in the fall and the asphalt isn't done, the playground isn't up, it's another thing our children have to go through, the staff has to go through. And I just, I think I saw that we were going to talk about our building and the dirt path that we walk on, and I'm like, I don't want you all congratulating yourselves on this move. When we cut the ribbon, when you talk about walkthroughs, all of that, talk to the teachers, thank them for what they have gone through, thank the staff, who, some of them moved themselves this week. I had to move some of my own boxes this week, the rest I wasn't, because I don't get paid for that, but there's some things I needed to move. I know that there are things that happen that we don't have control over, I still don't understand why we did it this late, and it's very frustrating, and I know some of the teachers and staff aren't going to come up here, that's all right, I will. I just, what else? Sorry. I just still want assurances, I did talk to Larry Cross on Saturday, maybe it wasn't the kindest when I heard about all the things that happened on Saturday, but I just want assurances that in the fall, we are going to get all the things that were promised to us as a school, so that not only my child, but the rest of the children at Disney are well taken care of. And if you have a ribbon cutting, have Molly cut the ribbon, have the teachers and the staff behind her, because Molly has been very much a part of every part, and hearing a lot of us grumble and complain, and I just want to give that shout-out. So I think that's it. Do I have more time? Got 45 seconds. So I'm just going to say this, and I'm going to address the board. We should have a Pride Day. We should have a Black Lives Matter Day. We should have any marginalized, marginalized community day, because we have students that are represented in those areas. And for people to come up here and say that those students are sexualizing people is very wrong, and I hope that this board calls it out, and I hope that people who are listening at home call their friends and families out for this kind of rhetoric. Thank you.
Sorry, staff responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to the speakers. Regarding item 12B and Pride Month, Ms. Morrison, you said it so passionately, so well. Ms. Zaragarian, we do disagree, I do disagree with your comments. The resolution's very clear, our work is very clear when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's about understanding and respecting all humans and focus on humanity. You see clearly in the policy, it talks about supporting policies, practices, curriculum, that respect, it's about respect, it's about love, it's about inclusion. It's not about sexualization of students. So if there's concerns about our curriculum, concerned about our policies, I'm happy to have those conversations. But I, I respect your opinion, but I disagree with your opinion. And for all of our students and faculty and parents, please know, BUSD is always focused on respect, inclusion, and focusing on how we can elevate every human in this district and this community and make sure that we are a unified district. Thank you. For Ms. Wamsley, thank you so much for all your, your dedication and hard work, and not just on the AP fundraising. on the AP fundraising, as you highlighted today, just a legacy you've left in this district and community. And you see it every day of how many people, how many souls you've touched and helped develop into amazing young men and women in this entire community. So thank you. And I do encourage everyone to visit the website and donate for the AP fundraising. You'll see at the item later tonight. We are codifying a policy we have for open access for AP and honors courses, and we're including students that may have struggled in other courses. They get a D, but they have an opportunity to still access the higher level courses. Oh, my goodness. I wrote down your name, Ms. McKinney?
Fagnani.
Fagnati. I
It's a difficult one.
I had it, and now I can't even read my own writing.
Just forget the G, you know?
Fagnati. Sorry. Thank you. It's not an agenda item again, but I just want to acknowledge your advocacy, your organization. I know there's been conversations continuing with the administration at Monterey High School around the schedule. So I appreciate you coming down here and sharing that. Eventually, it's going to be an item on the board meeting, so tonight I won't comment on it, but I just want to say, continue to have that conversation with your teachers and the administration at Monterey High School. Mr. Guyer, he's still there, as well as your new principal, Ms. Weaver. I know Dr. Paramo and Ms. Nieman have been there, and Ms. Casao is available to support. We want to continue to hear about the options that Monterey is considering, and we'll make sure that that process has been inclusive before it comes to a board meeting, and all those questions have been addressed. So thank you for coming down here tonight. And Ms. Morrison, yes, I know Ms. Kukta and Mr. Cross have been keeping me up to date. I do want to thank everyone for coming this weekend and helping out. Dr. Knopik, what I were talking about, he's amazed that he's not sore. I heard about, oh, moving desks, moving boxes. Everybody wants to help support the teachers and the entire staff to have Disney move successful. Just on the timing, they needed to make sure they got it done so that the day after school, they can start the demolition, so that we don't have the challenges in the fall. So the timing is compressed. And on Ms. Kukta and the Facility Subcommittee, we're continuing to have conversations and make sure that we are being updated on any challenges, obstacles, and pushing through those. You're absolutely right. We need to thank and acknowledge and recognize the disruption that construction is having on our staff, especially this time of the year. So anything that we can do, I know Mr. Cross is committed to supporting and making sure this goes as smoothly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Dr. Auguste Conian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To our speaker, Ms. Zargarian, I don't think you read the resolution, first of all, and I don't know where you got your bachelor or undergrad or masters from. You know, back in 2000, I was fighting against Proposition 22. I'm aging myself, but if some of you may recall, 22 was the proposition which passed, but fortunately, it was overturned later, that a marriage is between a man and a woman. And I was out there, along people like Paul Krikorian, who's a council member now in LA, fighting against Proposition 22. Because for me, and I don't know where you're coming with this interpretation of sexualization, this is about equality and treating others with respect. As a founder of the DEI Committee, this is a conversation that we've been having from the beginning. And if you read the resolution, and if you read it, which I don't think you did, it says at the end, "Support of policies, practices, and curriculum that honors and respects LGBTQ students, staff, and their families." And for me, what upsets me is this interpretation of what it is we're doing. I have lost friends who committed suicide because they were too afraid to come out. And it's very difficult. Yet, you know, this is a district that also passes the same resolution protecting communities like the Armenian community. Last year, when we were talking about the Karabakh and the resolution, and how the family should be treated respectfully, because it is difficult for them. I don't think you really understand what this resolution is about.
You don't need to insult, you know?
This is not a, this is not a debate. This is not a debate.
Okay. All right. You need to stop, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, and, excuse me, absolutely you do, and we let you speak, and now it is our turn, and just like we listen to you, you will have to listen to us. And or you don't have to stay to listen to us either, but we have the right to respond. Thank you.
Where you got your bachelor or your masters? Is that a professional board member? Really? And you're not going to address that?
May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, for me, I think you should do a little more research, and you should understand, this is, this has nothing to do with what your interpretation is.
It looks very good on paper. I'm just telling teachers that this does not mean they can do whatever they want. It looks very good on paper. I've read it on paper.
Thank you. And for all of our listeners out there also, I want to remind everyone, this is not a representation of certain communities, as much as people like to sometimes, you know, talk about it as just, yes, it's not. And it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation today and nowadays. And it's unfortunate that it's even a national conversation. Let me remind everyone, at least as long as this board member is here, we're going to honor our LGBTQI members. We're going to celebrate who they are. We should not only have a Pride Day a month, we should also have a Black Lives Matter, just like, you know, we have an Armenian Genocide Day, Holocaust Day. This is about humanity. This is about treating one another with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagner.
Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers coming out tonight. Excuse me. Ms. Wamsley, thank you again for, both for your recognition of the effect you have had on our community over the years, just seeing people here who you have taught, but also for your, for your promotion of the donations for the AP testing. As Dr. mentioned, we do have that on the agenda, as far as being able to expand that. So this may come in even more handy in the coming year, but we appreciate the efforts you have made consistently over the years to support the district. Ms. Fagnani, as we mentioned, it's not on the agenda, but thank you again for representing. We, it was said at the last meeting that we want to make sure we're hearing from the entire community, and you have made that effort. And that's the entire student community, certainly, and hearing from parents and staff is great. I'm trying to arrange to, Ms. Elliott had reached out, and I'm trying to arrange, you know, time to be able to interact a little more on this subject. So as we mentioned before, we have nothing but the greatest respect for Monterey, and that includes the, you know, the schedule that I think is a difference maker in, you know, the way that that school operates. So we'll continue to, you know, this debate going forward. Ms. Morrison, thank you for coming out. Thank you for your passion in every way, because you always have been very passionate in all subjects, and not, it's not always easy for us to hear, but it's, it shows the kind of person you are, the kind of educator you are. As Dr. Hill pointed out, part of the rush was, as soon as the new building was allowed to be occupied, we wanted to be able to move so that the day after school ends, they will start, you know, taking down the old building and trying to get everything done for the fall. It was, it's an unfortunate bit of timing. I, you know, when I first heard that, I thought, really? We're moving the last two weeks of the year? But we do want to try and make sure that, you know, it's at the beginning of the next school year, that it's, you know, we're moving along to hopefully have the asphalt done and the playground. But thank you to the staff. I know that was an incredible ask, and I know there was just a lot of work that had to be done at a difficult time of year, and we do appreciate that and recognize the efforts it takes. And as far as anything that might not be 100% yet on the new building, I'm sure we will continue following up on that. There are punchless items. I'm sure that they still haven't got to. It was, you know, it could be occupied, so we wanted to, you know, move forward. But, you know, we'll sure, we'll make certain that that is followed up on as well. To our speaker who decided not to face the music. As Dr. Auguste Conian pointed out, for one thing, the recognition of what the resolution will be having come up in 12B, I doubt that it was read, and if it was, it was completely I took it as, you know, a measure of pride last year, when for the first time, the district flew pride flags the entire month of June at all of our schools and at the district People, and it can be just a symbol sometimes, but it's more than that, especially in the times we are in now, where we continue to see across the country more and more bills that are, that are being signed into law by state governments around the country, trying to restrict what can be taught, what can be referenced, trying to eliminate even recognizing people for who they are. And by the way, this is who they are. And they are, it is a community that is, during their teenage years in high school, who are bullied more consistently, who face more depression, more suicide. She can throw out what statistics she wants, but those are documented, and have been for years. I don't, recognizing and honoring, I think you put it very well. We should, you know, try and recognize all underrepresented groups, and this, that's the effort we are making here. This isn't changing our curriculum. And by the way, I, too many people, when it comes, when they hear LGBTQ, the sexualization automatically comes to their mind. This is not what it's about. That's certainly not what we're teaching on a regular basis, on any basis, on a regular basis. I misspoke. But we do need to make sure our students are learning and understanding about everyone, and that there are, there are people from, in all different, with backgrounds and all different types, and in elementary schools, yeah, some students have two mothers or two fathers, and they shouldn't be embarrassed about that fact. They shouldn't be made to feel that that, there's something wrong, that they can't talk about that. I've considered myself an ally for a long time now, and I've been challenged at times that maybe I'm not doing enough. And that's tough for me to hear, but maybe I have to hear it sometimes. I will continue to fight for recognition and support of our students and staff, and make sure that we are fighting discrimination against them anyway, and recognizing Pride Month is a step in that direction. And frankly, it's a small step. This is a very small thing we can do, and we, and we can do it as a district, but, but we, we'll have to continue to strive to do more. And educate people, like our speaker, about what, what it really means and what we're talking about, and, and the harm they do when they try to misrepresent it. And the reason we need to talk about it, talk about these subjects sometimes, is because students may not, may hear all of that at home, and so maybe we need to expose them to other ideas. Parents are always going to have the most influence on their children, and nothing should change that, and I'm not trying to change that. But we also need to make them aware and try and educate them about everyone, and hopefully that will lead to acceptance of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Deep cleansing breaths. Okay, so first things first. To Ms. Wamsley, I have known you, I feel like, forever. Last year, you raised single-handedly nearly $10,000. And it's as if decades in the classroom wasn't enough. She's back, and now she's raising money, and she's taking credit cards. Thank you. I will get my donation in tonight. But more than anything, way to be that one-woman army, you know, that just gets it done and delivers for kids. There was a time where, because of budget cuts, we weren't able to extend additional supports for those who struggled to pay for PSATs and, you know, a bunch of different AP tests, you name it. And, and again, sometimes budgets can be stretched to accommodate, and sometimes it really does take initiative from the community. And I want to thank not just you, but many of the business partners who not just wrote checks to you, but also continued to write checks to the foundation and others throughout the year as a part of their sustain giving. So as you begin this adventure again, first of all, just my sincerest gratitude, but really, truly, that volume of money and that volume of commitment is just rarely seen. So just a thank you again. Catherine, it is good to see you. I'm glad that you felt heard. You know, we still have to vote, so, you know, you know, we're going to get there. Having said that, you know, hint, hint to the administrators when we have almost 100% of folks signing on board, of students signing on board. At a minimum, we are going to need to communicate at a different level with students. There's an expectation, and there is an opposition to what is being seen. So no matter what we are going to need to do, I think some real engagement to make sure there's buy-in with whatever model is going to come from this. So I, again, appreciate your activism, you know, petitions. It's all fun and games till somebody brings a petition and says, I've got everybody. So
I tracked people down. I had a list.
I have no doubt. I have no doubt. This is why Monterey also is another special place, because you really do, you know people, you are able to you are able to engage with them, and yeah, on issues like this, you can build community. So way to go. And again, just a hint, hint to administrators, and let's see how this process goes. To Ms. Morrison, I'm going to start on the building. I want to thank you for consistently communicating with us when, when there are pitfalls or shortfalls in, in, in our efforts to communicate, in our efforts to move. Mr. Knapp, Dr. Knappic, wow. Thank you. And thank you to all, everybody who stepped up and helped to make that possible. I, I don't love hearing the stress that it causes. I don't, I don't love hearing that. I think some of that is inevitable, but again, where it's preventable, I think, again, we should continue to strive to do what we can there. Give Ms. Wong the scissors, you know, I, I am more than happy with that. Having said that, when it comes to summer construction and hearing a bit of the feedback from Ms. Morrison about, we want to return to a campus where things that were promised are delivered upon, I think if we can get a summation of what work is expected to be done over the summer, and this may already been done, I'm, I'm just saying, and what we can really expect, and be very clear to the parent community, to the staff, and to the students, what they can expect when they come back in the summer, or what the goal is for them to, and again, if we don't meet that, that bar, that's fine. We're communicating, we're working our, you know, and demonstrating sincerity and our commitment to move that and to communicate through the disruption. So for the facilities subcommittee, if we could figure that out and, and bring that back and offer that to the campus community so that they have something to look forward to, so that they can hold us to account to that, I think that would be important. So again, thank you for that. First, to Ms. Morrison, wow. No, wow. 10 years ago, that would not have happened. It just wouldn't have. And that, if you are a member of the LGBT community in Burbank, you live in an incredibly special community, who, who loves you. And I am living, breathing proof of it, because as an openly gay man, without children, and you know me, I wouldn't be up here if this community wasn't capable, and not just a small majority of this community, a big majority of this community. And by the way, I got re-elected, so it wasn't an oops. And to all my opponents who said it, I love you. But we all try and be allies when we can, when we believe in causes, when we know communities, when we know friends and loved ones are being left behind consistently by this world. We all try, and sometimes, yes, we fall short, because it takes moments of courage to stand up and to say, when it's clear, and when it's visible, and when it's in the room, like it was, but also when it's not, when it's not so clear, when an environment has become toxic. Our ability to stand up in that moment, show up, counts. You showing up, Ms. Morrison, in that way showed kids and showed this community what you do when you see it. And thank you. I had to learn that, and I think you were the one who called that out with me. And we're all human, we learn. And I want to thank you for teaching me that, for modeling that for me, and for modeling that for our kids. But again, this is a district, and every single person up here, at one point in her time, has worked hard to grow personally, to build greater capacity to love on kids. And I am so proud to be a part of that team and a part of that district that did that. And when those flags went up, by the way, those flags went up at a time of school year where no kid was distracted by it, because there was no kid in the dang classroom. So there's that. You have no idea what it meant to see those colors. I can speak for my slice of the pie, you know? And I hope we have a Black Lives Matter Day. I hope we celebrate our Latino students. I hope we celebrate the diversity that makes this district so damn great. I think every day, we should give everybody a day, you know, where we can. But as a student who was consistently called the F-word on campus, as a student who knew teachers who said it too, it mattered to see those colors up in front. And to Ms. Zargarian, I don't question the hard work it took for you to get your degrees. I don't question the knowledge that you have. But in a time in this world where there's so much pain, why you would choose to take the time that God has given you with your life, and to come in this moment, and to speak in a way that is so alienating, I guess I just don't want to spend my life that way. And so to you, my deepest prayer is that one day, you will understand, and that one day, the change hopefully in your heart will bring a better life to somebody you know. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. I do want to just, again, I know that a speaker walked out, but, you know, as someone who's in the world of higher education academia, if you come forward, starting your conversation with your credentials, and you being an expert, then I will question that, because, you know, to me, that was no insult directly to that person, but to me, I know people work very hard here, working four jobs to get my education and masters. But if you start your conversation that, I have this degree and I'm an expert, and then you bring, you know, this kind of a conversation forward, as a defender of the word of academia and everyone out there who's really worked hard to get their degree, I will disagree with it. And that's the beauty of also education, you know? Don't start your conversation with your credentials and saying you're an expert in the area if your understanding does not demonstrate what you have learned.
Well, Ms. Morrison, I'm going to start with you and apologize to you. My, my role up here is to run a meeting, keep things flowing, and it was really hard to slam that gavel and say, please address us. I know, but I wanted to say it to you, because I wanted to say what you were saying and do what you were doing, but I can't do that either. Everybody, fortunately or fortunately, unfortunately, depending on their opinion, has the right to come up and speak. And even when the words hurt, hurt our ears just for listening to it, and hurt our hearts and our souls, because you just know, you just know that what she was saying was, was wrong. And while she was speaking, I was having this argument with myself, with, I said, well, I'm just going to not even respond to her, because it's not worth it. It's not worth my time. And then I went, no, you can't let somebody get away with that kind of thought. You have to speak up, and you have to say something, because that's going to, that is what is going to make the difference. And, and Mr. Ferguson, I'm probably the person on the board who's had to work the hardest and grow to understand, you know, you think you, you get it, and then something happens, and you're like, oh, whoa, I didn't even think of that. I didn't even, and you're, it's a constant challenge to grow and understand where people of all walks of life come from. We don't, we don't, we're, we, we're not all in the same boat, so to speak. But we need to understand and hopefully get the flow of the water that all the boats are on going in the same direction. And I think that, hopefully, with whatever we all have inside of us, folks like this will one day learn that it's just, the ugliness doesn't need to continue, it's just the, there's only one thing you can, that we all need to be in this world, and that is kind. And, and that's, that's all. So thank you for your words. Now let's talk about your building. And, and I'm really hoping, Mrs. Katka, that at the next facilities meeting, we kind of get a serious rundown for those of us that weren't participating on Saturday, so we know what happened. I, I do know that there was a push to get things done so that we could move everybody, and so that the rest of the work could begin to take place Monday, so that we do get it done in time for school to start. That is definitely the plan. I've heard it multiple times in committee meetings. But, you know, best-laid plans sometimes, especially when you're dealing with construction. So I make no promises, but I will listen and hear, and thank you so much. Dr. Knappic, I'm, I hear from elementary principals, employee, all the time, that they all think that you wear some kind of superhero cape underneath that suit you wear, because you do amazing things for them all the time, and they appreciate you, as, as do I, and they, and they really know that they can count on you, not just to show up and shake your head and, you know, but you're in there, physically moving desks, helping load kids, do whatever it takes when somebody needs something, and, and that's appreciated. Fight on. That's right. I wanted to tell her where I went to school, but anyway. Catherine, thank you once again for all your diligent, hard work. It does make us feel good to hear you feel you've been heard, and thank you for coming back, and thank you for Sunday, because I had a wardrobe malfunction that Catherine took care of, so thank you for having my back. Appreciate it. Mrs. Wamsley, when you were talking, and like, you know, I had, I had, oh my gosh, getting old stinks. I had.
Owen.
Owen, thank you, thank you. Owen in my classroom, and Catherine, and, and Mr. Ferguson's known you forever, and I can think of all my friends who've said, oh, I had Mrs. Wamsley, I had Mrs. Wamsley. I love what you're doing, and I think we need to call on those folks. I'm thinking of a few friends of mine that we've talked about, that, and I'm willing to help you. Let's sit down and figure out who all those folks are, and let's send, let's add to that 100-people list, and, and get them to say, you know, thank you for my great education, here's X amount of dollars to help another student do the same thing. So I'm in with you. Let's get together in the next month or so, whenever you have time, and make that happen, if you don't mind. I had so many, I was so excited about this meeting as we were going forward. It was so positive, and, you know, new principals and, and swim team CIF champions, and anything I want to talk about now just seems like, so I may save it, I have for the, for the second, it'll still be worthwhile. We did do some celebrating this week. Some of us went to the Kiwanis Teacher of the Year Luncheon. They do a fabulous job of recognizing the teacher of the year from every single school site, and they give them a lovely certificate and a $100 gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble, which is extraordinary and very, very kind. BTA yesterday celebrated our teachers who had 25 years in the district, and the retirees, always, always, well, we haven't had it for, in a couple of years, but definitely had a wonderful time celebrating them in a fantastic venue with amazing food, and, I mean, doesn't that always add to a wonderful celebration of people? So thank you for BTA, for putting on an extraordinary event. And then last night, we had the adult school graduation, which, there we are back again. We talked, you know, celebrating folks, human beings, adults who had a tough time, for whatever reason, there's a whole bunch, of not successfully graduating the first time around, but didn't give up, got back up, did whatever they had to do, and chose the adult school to get their, their high school diploma. And I'm, I'm so proud. 50 wonderful human beings yesterday, and all of them were so excited, as were their families, and it's just so much fun to participate in. And you know what? I'm not going to let that ruin my fun. I'm going to tell you about another thing that I'm very excited about. You know, I know, I under, I do understand this. All of our students, from whatever pathway they're on, work very hard to go down that pathway. Jewel Reader talked about senior plans. Some plans are to go to college, a four-year, a community college. Some plans are to work after, after high school. Some plans are to go into the military. Whatever it is, the important part is having a plan, and every student works hard at that plan. And there's a group of students that work very hard, and they work very hard on their academics, and then they also work on top of that in, in some, on some sport. There are student athletes. And it's not easy to get a college scholarship. You do have to have grades. I've had so many students, when I was a teacher, who thought, just because they excelled at whatever sport, that some university was going to hand them money to come to their college. And that's not the case. Yes, you have to excel at your sport, but you also have to excel academically, and to, to get a spot. And, and so these students from Burbank and Burrows, these are the Burrows students, Lincoln Melcher, who will be playing golf at UCLA, Jose Alvaros, who'll be playing football at Southwest Minnesota, Megan Lynch, volleyball at Fresno, Braden Silby Ackerman, baseball at Norfolk State University, Bella Lomette, volleyball, Bates College, Charlotte Hobson, volleyball, Bucknell University, Devin McGivern, baseball, Morningside University, Gigi Garcia, softball, Cal State Dominguez Hills, Gunner Nichols, baseball, Pepperdine, Clarissa Robles, water polo, Sienna College, Mason Medina, baseball, at Cal State University, San Marcos. Those are the, the Burrows students, the Burbank High students. Bear with me two seconds. Jacob Zeniga, University of Redlands, football. Steinlin Varga, Wisconsin Lutheran College, football. Kiara Hernandez, Shorter University, girls golf, or I guess in college, it's women's golf. Daniel Nerea, California State University, San Marcos, baseball. And Jack Saptia, Biola University. I believe in track. It's not here, but I happen to know Jack's family, so congratulations to all of them for their hard work and dedication. It's not easy. And then it's even more difficult. I'm speaking from experience, his son had a college athletic scholarship, and, and Dr. Agarconian, I'm going to change your words, it's not just major universities, there are thousands of D1s, D2s, D3s that help our student athletes, either with money or women board, and these students get the extra help, but that university owns them. And so their life will be very different from what they know now, and I hope they enjoy every single moment and are successful at it, as I wish for all of our students, whatever their choices are. So that's, that's my report for tonight. Thank you very much. Yes. Dr. Agarconian is asking for a five-minute break. I'm okay with that? You okay with that? Okay. Five-minute break. Um, I'm okay with that? You okay with that? Okay. Five-minute break.
A through G, and we didn't identify specific courses or subjects where students were having more difficulty than others. And then lastly, and probably most important to the legislation was identification of students that were below grade level and making sure that we were providing supports to all of those students. Our next slide digs into the independent study program. So again, these are students that we felt were were critical in need of support because they were entering a second year of distance learning, many of them. So we did, we provided a lot of professional development to our teachers who signed on as independent study teachers to bolster not, not only the practices they had done, had used during distance learning, but to utilize the model as it was going to exist this year for independent study and how best to teach in that model. We also provided, and when I say us, it was a lot of the work that Lucy and Laura did is communicate with independent study students, students and families, because there was an increased role for the, for the family and the parents when students are on independent study. So we really wanted to be a liaison for those families and support them in helping their students learn at home. Additional additionally, we supported students by that were transitioning. So that was part of the law with independent study was the students were able to, or families were able to transition at any given time and we were needing, we needed to respond to that within five days to provide that transition. So they were critical in making those transitions, transitions smooth into independent study or when families chose to return back to in-person learning, making sure that they were transitioned back to the classroom without a lot of distress to the student. And then lastly was additional monitoring for student engagement and attendance, which is always an issue in distance learning and making sure they're engaged in attending classes and doing the work that was required. Our third area of focus was academic growth and support. And this was primarily through a program that was purchased also with grant money, one-time COVID funds. And that was an iReady diagnostic program. The reason why we chose that program was because it met some of the requirements of the law to assess students at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year and measure their progress throughout the, throughout that. But in addition to that, iReady was one of the few programs that provided tailored or prescriptive lessons for students based on a needs analysis from those assessments. So iReady was to us, not just an assessment tool, but it was also an intervention tool that we used. And that was used K through eight. And there's a lot you can do with iReady. And so some of our elementary sites are familiar with it, but about half of our elementary sites, this was new. And we extended that to our middle schools to include them in this process. And so they were really implementing a new program this year at the middle schools with, with quite a bit of success. The last piece to the iReady program is it does provide additional data and opportunities for teachers to do small group instruction with students based on the diagnostic results and in the readouts. And we'll look at that data in just a few slides. I, I do also want to mention, in addition to iReady, before I move on, that many of our, especially our elementary sites had programmed, existing programs that are very similar with providing tier two interventions. And those would be RTI teachers that many of our sites already have. And that also looks very similar to instructional aids in collaboration classes that support students on IEPs or ELD students in the gen ed sections. So not just iReady, but there's other programs that we, we were already in existence that we supported or helped to provide support to. This is a, this is a really interesting slide because it, it, there's a lot of work behind what this slide indicates. And what it, what it does is it identifies the students that we had looked at at the beginning of the year based on the iReady diagnostic tool as well as their initial grades at the beginning of the year. And we created an intervention cohort that we wanted to track and monitor throughout the entire year based on how they performed at the very beginning of the year. So that's what those numbers are that you can see. And, and you can also see that some students qualified in not only English or math, but both areas. And then compared to our total enrollment for those grades. But specifically the chart to the right, which is, which is a little small and hard to read on this, in, in this presentation, identifies all of the different interventions that those students were provided and how many students were participating in those. And so iReady and I, math and reading was a very good tier two intervention to catch a lot of students and to meet the, where their needs were. And it wasn't as, as intrusive as far as removing them from class or, or other measures that are a little more tier three in essence. You can also see the number of students participating in special ed, ELD services, RTI programs that already existed, SSTs and attendance reviews. So a lot of different supports, trying to make sure every kid was, was getting something that needed it. This is the same data for secondary. So you can see our intervention cohort, we work directly with our middle schools and our, and our sixth or eighth, again, through the same diagnostic assessment and grades and then the different supports that were given to them. In addition to this, they have some after-school tutoring, staff consultation, intervention courses that were also provided. And then monitoring progress, which is unique to the middle schools too, where they are specifically monitoring a student and how they do each grading period. So the, the data we just looked at was, was for the most part district data, district wide. We're going to focus a little bit just on elementary and look at some specific data just for them. This data set, the data sets that we're going to look through for the next handful of slides are from the fall semester primarily and mid-year. We did a mid-year assessment in January using the iReady program to see if we could identify some growth. We will revisit this again at the end of the year because they're doing end of year assessments as we speak and end of year grades. But this first slide is our iReady diagnostic data, which I had referenced earlier. And these are our reading diagnostic scores and math diagnostic scores. You can see a spread across each grade level of, of where our students are at. I would point out when we work with iReady that when this is given at the beginning of the year, this is really a measurement of, of where they should be at the culmination of that grade level. So if we have students that are early on or even one grade level behind at the very beginning of the year, that's very typical because they've just started that grade. So what we wanted to identify and specifically work with were the students that were two grade levels below or three grade levels below. So that they didn't, that, that was the group that we really targeted to, as far as that intervention cohort that we looked at in the previous slides. Specific to this data, I would point out that there was a significant group in first grade that came to us that were one grade level below. And in math specifically too, there was a chunk of students in that, in that same designation that we wanted, that we were looking at. This next year, this slide is also iReady data. And it's not boys or moys. This is beginning of the year and middle of the year data. And what I wanted to point out with this slide is you can see that beginning of the year is, is the, is the first column, followed by the second column is a little, is a, looks a little bit higher or a little bit better. And so we're seeing, we saw growth basically in all of our grade levels, first, second, third through fifth. That from the beginning of the year to the middle year, our students are increasing in their abilities on the diagnostic. To the right is the number of students that were assessed and then some of our general analysis for, for this information. But you can see that third grade, there was quite a bit of growth from just the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. We'll look at this data again at the end of the year, once they've taken the end of year assessment. This is the opposite of what we just looked at for reading. And these, these scores are specific to reading from the previous slide and this slide. These are our students that we are in our intervention cohort or tracking. And you can see that those numbers go down from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So we saw a reduced number of students that were below, significantly below grade level already at the middle of the year. And we hope to have these numbers below 10% across the board by the end, end of the year. This slide is specific to domains within English Language Arts. And so, and this is one of the neat analysis tools that iReady provides as a program is it looks at different domains and where our students need support. And you can see at early grade levels, there's phonological awareness that is an area that's the blue. But then you see that actually disappears. And as they increase in grade level, there becomes much more demand or much more support needed for comprehension and informational text. So what this information tells us is where we can focus our, our time and energy in our classrooms as far as what our students need or where they're not being as successful. Now we're going to look at math, same type of chart for beginning of the year and middle of the year and each grade level. And then you can see that there's an increase in performance at, already at the middle of the year for those groups. And then the opposite of that, students below grade level, significantly below grade level, middle of the year, those numbers have diminished already by the instruction and, and some of the work that we've been doing. This is also specific to math, similar to the one we looked at English Language Arts. It's not as, there's not as much analysis to be done on this, but it is an indicator that students need support in all areas in math. It's not that we have a specific domain that, that needs attention. So now we're going to look at specifically our intervention cohort. So the previous slides have been all students district wide. But these, these slides are looking and tracking just our intervention students that we identified at the beginning of the year, either by grades or their diagnostic assessment and how they were doing mid-year. And you can see that there's some, there's quite a bit of growth, some students that are already back up to grade level that were below grade level at the beginning of the year and diminished a number of students that are two or especially, especially three years below. So we've done some good work as far as just at the mid-year catching some students back up that had some serious learning gaps. And then this is the same data and table for math. Where you can see that growth that has occurred. So they're given the same diagnostic beginning and mid, and their performance indicates some, some growth there. An improvement just in that intervention cohort that we identified behind grade level. So now we're going to look at secondary data. There's a little bit of a different focus with our secondaries. Students, middle schools will look somewhat similar to, to what we've done with elementary. But in high school, we did have a special, especially a focus for A through G completion and credit recovery. So we dive right in with grades. Reason we, we didn't use grades for elementary is because they grade on standards-based grades. And so it's, it's part of the process that they indicate progress throughout the year. So it's not as good of an indicator to measure beginning of, end of year. But for secondary, their grades and their courses is a good measure to, to look at. So you can see, these are the grade analysis data for first semester ELA. And we're looking at grades specifically to make sure students aren't falling behind or our DNF rates have an increased post-pandemic or post a year of distance learning. This is the 10-week and false, and then the final semester in fall for English. And then this is our intervention cohort, just at the middle school. So those students that were below grade level to start. And I wanted to share this, even though there's not a lot of, of change in, from just the fall, the 10-week to the semester. But it is worth noting that if these students were identified as below grade level, they're still being very, there's a, still a significant number that are being successful in passing their courses. And so there's a good distribution in that, even within that group of maintaining or sustaining an A, B, or C in their classwork. And then this is a similar chart for math, looking at the 10-week and semester grades for our students in sixth grade through 12th. Recall when we were working with our sites on this data, that there were discussions, especially about our seventh and 11th grade math courses, especially with 11th grade, students finishing out their math, their math career sometimes because that may be the last math course that they take. And then again, our intervention cohort at the middle school, these were our below grade level students that we're seeing still a good distribution for those students that, that they're being successful in their classes as far as passing. With about 70% of those students passing their math class. This is another data point for our intervention cohort. And this is looking at the fall math benchmark. So just looking back at grades, those, those students that were identified below grade level and they're, they're doing well with their grades, but they're also doing well on our district benchmarks. In fact, they're almost doing better on, on, on those benchmarks. So that's a good indicator too, that they're, we're meeting their standard, they're meeting the standards and accomplishing the learning involved. We took a specific look at our special ed students. And so this data here represents sixth through 12th, our students that are in special ed and their, their grade distribution. And so this is a good indicator too, that our special ed students aren't any, really any different than our gen ed population as far as their grade distribution. In fact, they have a smaller percentage of students getting and receiving an F in their classes. So our special students have done pretty well in their classes as far as earning the grades that they need to move forward. Next slide is looking just at ELD students, English learners, excuse me. And this is our, our semester data for them as well. I chose to use numbers instead of percentages for this because the, the, the groups are so small that just two or three kids could really sway a percentage. So it's just important to know when we're talking about these students that it's just a few students in some cases. So iReady, we, we did incorporate into our middle schools. And this was, like I said earlier, a new program for our middle school students. And so this, there's a lot on this slide. I apologize for that. But it's similar to what we looked at earlier with the elementary where we can identify specific domains where our students need more support and other domains where they're doing really quite well. So you can see in English Language Arts, phonics and, and some other high-frequency words. For example, our students are doing very, very well in. It's, it's other areas like vocabulary comprehension and informational text. And that validates some of the elementary data too, that as we move up into the grade levels, those other skills become more important to focus on. And then on the other side is math, that's on the right side, where we're looking at the beginning of the year results for our students. Number sense and operations, our students are doing very well in. On, on, on the diagnostic, it's other areas that we may need to look at for, for continuing support like geometry, measurement and data or algebraic. So now that we get to our high school focus and with high school, we're looking at A through G courses with 10-plus fails. This is something that we monitor as far as our credit recovery programming and opportunities for students to, to recoup those grades and, and move forward with their academic career. And so this is some of the data that we collected and looked at in the fall and also to plan for our summer school offerings as well. I would like to point out, especially when it comes to this slide, that traditionally algebra has been one of our, our courses with a high number of failure. And that the course has dropped significantly due to some work that's been done with, in collaboration amongst the two high schools in that specific course. So I would like to replicate that in some other courses going forward. And then this is fall A through G courses with 10-plus Ds. And so these were students that we are looking at a, creating a new program for this summer and going forward next year with grant money specific to A through G completion to provide great improvement so that they can remain A through G eligible for CSU or UC enrollment. And then this last slide is just a comparison because I think one of the topics involved with this is looking at learning loss and our students performing worse than they have in previous years. And so this is looking by at school and by grade level, previous GPAs, the average GPA across our schools. And what you can see is in 2019 and 20 and fall semester, just for that one semester, looking at that fall, the average GPA for our students was 3.09 overall. And this fall, after coming off of distance learning and the pandemic, that average GPA has remained exactly the same. You can see some variance within the grade levels. But just, just a good point to reference as far as our students still meeting the demands of the coursework to, to move forward. And then there's appendix slides. And as I just kind of click through these, these are just an idea of some of the slides that we've shared throughout the year with our sites and our, and our site conversations with their teams about the work that they're doing and analyzing the data that they were able to pull to help make decisions and support students. So we highlighted Bret Hart Elementary. And then we also highlighted Luther Burbank Middle School for the work that they've done. And these specifically are slides that our, our two coordinators have put together. So I'd like to just end by recognizing the work that they've done this year. They've worn many hats throughout the year, including, you know, teaching independent study classes, covering at sites when we've had COVID surges, not just days, but weeks at sometimes. And then also implementing new programs like the iReady program at sites that this was new to. They've also provided a lot of validation and cheerleading to sites for this was a lot of difficult work coming off a pandemic and all the obstacles that we faced this year to, to really work to support the students that needed this help. So this is where we are today and we'd like to revisit this again, once we have our end of year data so that we can compare from beginning to end of year. So I appreciate your time today and wanted to share where we're at with this work.
Thank you very much. Do any colleagues have any comments? Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you. First things first, this clearly took a lot of work. So thank you and thank you for creating and pulling this data. This is to me, a good snapshot of semester one. My biggest concern frankly, though, is semester two, where we had about 10 weeks where a third of our school district was not in school. And so what I want to do is first, you know, take the lessons, I think, from this when we have kind of a stable learning environment and see, you know, across the board, it looked like one in four elementary, about one in four consistently elementary were two or more grade levels behind. And, and I'm not trying to say this critically, I'm just trying to say it in terms of wrapping our heads around where the intervention should be focused. And again, this is based off of data that ends semester one. So also about one in two elementary students around math are two or grade levels below or behind. So I think more than anything, one, I would like to see basically this same presentation, but with semester two data as soon as possible. Especially because the state budget and the way it's being allocated, that we are going to see a lot of one-time money. And to me, that one-time money should be operationalized with these specific populations in mind. I think if we can pull from this data demographic information to see if there's consistency within the population that is falling within that top or in that 25 to 50% threshold. So we can start moving resources there. None of this is rocket science and I know staff is doing this on some level. But in terms of what we're presenting to the public, I just want to be clear, this is one snapshot, one view. And I think we need to continue to track and, and to think with that in mind, especially as we talk about and plan with one-time dollars. So I really, I don't think we're obviously going to be able to get enough data back and the presentation back before budget adoption. Having said that, I think it's pretty clear that in stable times, there's a lot of work to do to catch students up. And so I think that we really just need to, I think iReady sounds like a good tool. I, I also particularly like the component of your presentation where you discussed that, you know, as a result of this intervention, we don't have to do more disruptive interventions that, you know, require pulling out additional staff time. So working smart, I think, is really brilliant. Using technology and deploying that, I think also is brilliant. But, you know, I, I think this paints a good picture, you know, but it still leaves some room for concern. And, and I know we're all committed to not leaving any of these kiddos behind. So with that, again, I, I just would like to see this back as soon as possible with the updated spring semester data. This helps, again, I think with an initial snapshot. I think the other component, again, we're going to continue to talk about is the social emotional component of this, right? It, it's one side to see the, the, the data and the numbers. It's another side to see what it took to do that homework. And I think teachers will tell that story and aides will tell that story, that getting folks to do the work, getting folks to turn in has been extremely difficult this year as well. So thank you again for all the work and to all the sites who clearly contributed to the appendix. I think this is good. This equips us with some awareness of, I think, where we need to push. But I think it would be clearer with spring data. And once we can get that, let's attach boosters. But again, thank you to everybody for, for hearing the urgency behind identifying these populations and, and for working so hard to, to identify so quickly so we can get those interventions in place and get them back on track. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I do agree with my colleague, but also, you know, I want to know when it comes to intervention and addressing some of these concerns and questions, there's also the question of funding, what's out there? You know, it's one thing to put out studies, the other one is can we afford them if we want to address some of these concerns? And I think that's, to me, that's also important because what I'm seeing now in higher education now is that there we're seeing a lot of, you know, students having challenges, even coming from, especially the students who went through the pandemic to the high school and now going to college, even if they go, you, you're seeing the, some of the challenges, especially in mathematics and English. It's, I mean, I can tell you, at least at my college, there's a tremendous drop of students taking English classes or mathematics or even qualifying to, you know, pass or not. And these are new students, you know? So my first question is, and the wonderful data, you know, I love, I love this stuff. But my question also is, is there funding? And is this something we need to be ready for? Because if we're going to have to address this as part of the bigger solution, especially the transition to colleges and some of the challenges they're having, is there a conversation about, you know, any additional funding on this?
So we've been utilizing the COVID relief funding and we've been allocating that for the tier one, two, and three interventions that we've, we highlighted earlier in the presentation. As Board Member Ferguson highlighted, the state proposal and the May revise has an allocation of one-time funding. They haven't provided the details. It seems it's going to be pretty flexible, but then we can align that to the interventions we put in place. And you start off with iReady, then you get into expanding our RTI and our intervention sections. And then we'll go deeper with expanded summer school and other options that we've highlighted. Anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Casao?
Is it, is it possible, thank you, Dr. Hill, is there, is it possible that we attach potentially trigger language to the one-time money? You know, if, if threshold X is, then we allocate X numbers to interventions. That way we can appropriate the money and then as the data comes back, we're ready to deploy. I, I just, I, I want, I would rather the one-time money be earmarked to address these core concerns because I think it is going to be expensive. You know, I would rather be, you know, and the board meetings during the summer, during the summer frankly, are inconsistent. So to me, it would be helpful at least for us to at least identify potential thresholds. Hey, if it's worse than these numbers, the semester numbers, and I leave that to staff to determine. But if it's worse than these numbers, then we're going to trigger automatically additional spending in these areas. Is that an approach at least we, that could be deployed?
And we can talk about in the June budget meetings, we'll come back with a framework. The framework we've been using is, as we've been working with the school sites and, and the staff here is, what you see is moving into those higher level tiers is that we need more funding for more intervention sections or more RTI hours. That's the variable that we've been focusing on. The foundation that we put in place to address these interventions are already there. So your concern about more students because of second semester would just increase that higher level intervention, which is just more hours, more sections. So that could be a pot of money that could be, we can come back with, this was what we may need to do that. But we've been working very closely with the school site, school site's been reviewing this data. So I think we have a pretty good handle on the interventions we have. The biggest intervention we're doing clearly right now is getting students enrolled into summer school based on grade. So it's not like we're just sitting waiting for new data to come here to present. We've already been doing that work. So I don't, I don't see a dramatic, oh no, we don't have enough resources to address where our students are. There may be some additional sections we need, but we can present that in June when we talk about the budget.
Okay. I, I, my concern, I, and I hear that and, and I also trust that intention. I, absolutely. What I do see though is consistently about 20% of the population not changing, no matter the, the interventions that we're currently deploying. So that tells the interventions that we're currently deploying. So that tells me that potentially, we may need different interventions or to explore different interventions to target that core 20 or to target that core 25%. And if that problem becomes more than 20% as we bring in the spring, fall semester data, that to me says that more of the same won't do. So that, to me, is where I'm trying to say, if there is some, so not to be critical of it, but again, if this problem is bigger than this, more of the same, I don't think is the, is the solution, how do we create enough budget flexibilities for you to respond to that by thinking outside the box a little bit? That's more where I'm trying to go. And if you don't have that mechanism tonight, which I get, then we can bring, then what I hope is you can bring that back in future budget discussions before we get to a last-minute August kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for my colleagues?
I'm also just curious when it comes to ELD students, you know. You know, I last time, I don't know who mentioned it, but I heard that there has been an increase or right, it was you, right, Ms. Casao? And so to me also is, you know, that becomes a more challenging sometimes with ELD students as well. And again, do we have the mechanism to even address the increase? Because I spoke with, in a class last week with ELD students, and I saw a very large, the largest I've ever spoken to in a while. But also, you know, I love their, you know, drive to really be successful, but at the same time, I also noticed there was only like one person, two people, one assistant, you know what I mean? Like, as a former ELD student, I can tell you, it takes a little more than that. My question is, do we have the funds if needed to even add to those programs? Because we're seeing this increased trend, obviously.
That will be the conversation that we'll come back in June about the one-time funds. How much do we allocate for English learners? We know there's a need in special education, as we've talked about, these interventions. So we'll have categories where we can spend it.
Good. And are you expecting any federal funding?
I have not heard any new federal funding.
Nothing, right.
Mr. Fritner?
Thank you. I don't want to take too much time because my colleagues have covered a lot of what I had made a few notes on anyways. Thank you, first of all, because there really is a lot of data here, and I'm sure an incredible amount of work that's gone into it. I do look forward to seeing where that data goes when we, when we bring the second semester information in. Because as, and I do like look through this like three times, you know, when I was trying to, you know, bring it all in. And most of the data looks great, actually, because you see improvements in a lot of areas. But there is a point that Mr. Ferguson brought forward, that there still seems to be a core that, you know, that we are either not reaching or, you know, that, you know, just has not been able to respond as far. Now, maybe we'll see in the second semester data that, you know, that does change. I also noticed that there's a few areas, like on the, the 2021 intervention cohort for both the math and the ELD, where the, between the 10-week grades and the semester grades, the Ds and Fs actually went up rather than down. That was one of the few things that wasn't tracking as well. So I don't know if that showed something that, you know, that was addressed right away, if there was a reason why we might have thought that that was happening. But, you know, it just seemed to go against the grain of what most of the data was showing. So that's, that's the only other comment I had.
May I respond to that? President Tabit?
Question that I probably shouldn't have been having. Yes.
No problem. I just wanted to say that for secondary. That's actually typical for grades because students start out with a higher grade, and it steadily declines by the end of the semester. So what we're trying to do is decrease that decline and save credits, but that is typical grade behavior for secondary.
And the discussion we were having was to see a multi-year projection going back, going forward, you know, so that, because my comment was, well, there always seems to be some group that doesn't quite manage to do what we hope they do. And so Mr. Ferguson's point was, okay, well, let's, let's dig at those kids and get them up higher. But it'd be good to see, because then we, I mean, there's many factors into learning. And so, and we only have ability to access some parts of their learning abilities. It doesn't all happen in the classroom at a school site. So it'd be good to see.
Yeah. And to the point we were making a little bit also was, it's really hard to look at benchmark data or to try and have benchmark data in this moment in time, right? So and while, yes, there's always a core group of students who may not meet expectations on every, every academic expectation of them or demonstrate at a B, C, or A level their mastery of a course or a subject area. I completely get that. But I think, I think as we start building data frankly, from this school year onward, to try and understand and triage a bit, you know, again, like, I think the answer could also be that it's not about an intervention program that is academically based, but also it's social emotional, right? And it's like, okay, this core group of 20 is so traumatized and worried about going back to school or being on time or, okay, that, and that's what I mean by it gets expensive. That's what I mean by that kind of planning, that kind of response and reactiveness. So, and if we do that, and if that's necessary, we have to build budgets for three years at a time now, right? So that's also, again, so while we have one-time money now, do we do seed money? Do we do grants? How are we going to do this to be sustainable? So that way, when the one-time money disappears, the interventions don't dry up and abandon these kids too. Because that too is planning we're responsible for.
Anything further? All right. Thank you very much. Very, very good. Okay, moving on, we polled 11B. We'll move on to 11C, report on facilities and technology projects. Mrs. Cutka.
Good evening, President Tabit, board members, staff, and community. So we have one item on the consent agenda today that is related to bond funding of facilities and technology meetings, if we can get the PowerPoint. So it's item 3V on the agenda. It is with the Walt Disney Elementary two-story building. Project is the demolition, earthwork, and paving for the two-story building. The contractor is Chalmers. The amount was not to exceed, the change order is not to exceed $14,725,15, which brings the total to $522,725. And this was to lay a pathway of decomposed granite, which would not have otherwise been necessary except for the Silver Creek delays. So this allows the ingress and egress of the students across the playground to get to the building. So, and I did want to address, I don't know if you have any questions about this item. I did want to address, there was a question about what would, major things would not be done when the kids return to school and we open up the buildings. So we've got blacktop that will be down. It will not have the lines painted on it, though, because it's, it's having to cure. And then also, the grass field will, we're leaning towards sod, but that sod does need time for the roots to establish. So it'll be beautiful, but untouchable for a period. So, and I know that'll be very hard to do, but, and we do apologize. I think when I was here two weeks ago, we talked about the stress of the construction and the moving, very bad timing, you know, and we can blame Silver Creek for part of it because of the delays. It was not our intent to have this happen. But, you know, if we want to get done and have the kids start in the, in the new building and have everything together, it was just, it was kind of our hands were tied. So we greatly apologize for all the inconvenience and no, the timing wasn't good, so.
It's a very hard project. You need teachers out and into their new spot so the old spot can, you know, be demoed and work move forward. I mean, it's all timing. It's, 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 it's a difficult job. And when you get it done right, it's, it's amazing. It's almost a miracle. So I think we've, we've done fairly okay. There's going to be glitches. It happens.
President Tabit?
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for the report and for tracking with us, because I think we've highlighted different concerns throughout this construction process, and I think you've done a good job reaching for it and attempting to answer those when we've thrown those out. So realizing construction is challenging and not perfect. Also, being a former student who was moved around from bungalows to renovated classrooms back, I get how disruptive it is and all of that. But again, one, I'm happy that we are moving towards completion on this, which will bring to a close, I think, a very long-standing promise and commitment that we've been trying to make. And two, it's really helpful on the grass and the blacktop component. So, you know, if we can get, work with the principal to get information out that, hey, these are going to be the things that may not be completely done when they get back. Having said that, they will look great. You know, that would be helpful. But in the meantime, for everybody who was working so hard to make this happen, including the volunteers who were helping to move and the staff that were helping to move, thank you.
You know, a couple of other things I should probably add. So on April 29th, they did walk, do a walkthrough with Silver Creek and came up with a punch list of items. And I want to say there were about 40 items, none structural in any means. So, and, you know, throughout the process, we've had that Department of State Architects there. So DSA has been there. And there, you know, usually when you build a residence or a building within the city, you follow city code, but we, we answer to a higher authority, which is DSA. So I mean, throughout the entire process, they've, they've been involved. So I want to make that clear. The building is safe and occupiable and it was ready to go with minor items. So.
Thank you. I know you have a lot on your plate now, too. Who knew you would be in construction as well as all the other things you do for us? So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, to new and or unfinished business, 12A, adoption of Resolution 43, proclaiming May 22nd, 2022 as Harvey Milk Day.
President Tabit?
Mr. Ferguson?
I will gladly move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 43 proclaiming May 22nd, 2022 as Harvey Milk Day.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Aga Konian. Do we have any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, one absent. Do I need to say that every single time?
Nope.
Great. Okay. 12B, adoption of Resolution 44.
Can I read it?
Oh, my goodness.
All right. Can I read it?
My apologies. Yes, you may.
Thank you. Resolution 43 proclaiming May 22nd, 2022 as Harvey Milk Day. Whereas today, we honor the life and legacy of Harvey Milk, the first openly gay politician in California. Let's call it an openly gay politician in California. There were other openly gay politicians, but he was elected to major office in California and the leader of the American Civil Rights Movement. And whereas Time Magazine included Harvey Milk on a list titled "The 100 Most Important People of the 20th Century." And whereas Harvey Milk was not only an advocate for the LGBTQ+ community, but for all minorities. He believed in safe, strong neighborhoods and supported public education, affordable childcare, and equal rights for all. And whereas Harvey Milk was elected to the position of city supervisor, county supervisor in San Francisco, where he held office one year before his life was tragically cut short in 1978 by a political rival who opposed Milk's liberal views. And whereas Harvey Milk's contributions to the cause of equality for all people has been recognized in a number of ways, including the issuance of a stamp with his picture on it, the posthumous awarding of the Medal of Freedom. And whereas Harvey Milk's work continues today through the work of the Milk Foundation founded by his nephew Stuart Milk in honor of his uncle. Whereas we honor Harvey Milk today, let us remember the words "hope will never be silent." Members of the LGBT+ community in the United States and around the world still face discrimination and violence rooted in the same hatred that Milk died fighting. They deserve hope and they cannot abide our silence. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education on behalf of the citizens of the City of Burbank that we proclaim May 22nd as Harvey Milk Day. You know, Harvey Milk's life and legacy certainly is something that is, is one example of LGBT leadership to look to. But I will remind everybody at home who doesn't know the history that it was a colleague who was radicalized by hate. It was a colleague who allowed an environment of toxicity to exist that ended up going after and eliminating the life of one. So it's not just our friends and loved ones we have to have conversations with. It's, it's those who we call friends and loved ones who struggle. And, and in order to build a greater world and a more successful world, it involves everybody talking. So thank you to Harvey Milk for his legacy of service that certainly opened the door for people like me and for many others in this world.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Moving on, okay? Anyone else okay? 12B, adoption of Resolution 44 in support of Pride Month, June 2022. Yes, Dr. Aga Konian?
I moved that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 44 in the support of Pride Month, June 20, 2002, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for the second, Mr. Fritner. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero. All right. Yes. Okay. Please go.
Thank you. Resolution 44 proclaiming June 2022 as the Burbank Unified School District, District's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas the Burbank Unified School District models, advocates, actively supports and promotes the inclusive and respectful treatment of all students, staff, family, members, and community members. Whereas the district believes that all students should be able to attend school in a safe and an inclusive environment free from discrimination. Whereas the district is firmly committed to providing a safe, nurturing, and tolerant environment in our schools. Whereas the district is firmly committed to, to school safety for all students, staff and family members, including the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning LGBTQ community, or those that may be perceived as such. Whereas the district believes that sexual orientation and gender expression bias, bullying are among the most common forms of harassment in schools, and let the lack of awareness and understanding of those issues have contributed to a higher rate of isolation, depression, suicide, suicidal ideations or attempts. Whereas, sorry. Whereas that significantly higher rate of school dropouts, academic failure, and school disengagement among LGBTQ youth across the country are attributed to peer harassment and bullying. Whereas children who do not conform to gender stereotypes are more likely to be targets of harassment and bullying. And whereas all this, and where all district schools must strive to ensure that Burbank schools are consistently safe and affirming spaces for all students, staff, and their families. Whereas Pursuit of Education Code Section 200, it is the policy of California to afford all persons in public schools regardless of their disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other protector characteristics, equal rights, and appointments in the education institution of California. Whereas the Pursuit of Education Code Section 201, all the California public schools have an affirmative obligation to combat racism, sexism, and other forms of bias, and a responsibility to provide equal education opportunity. And whereas Pursuit to the Education Code of Section 51933, California Healthy Youth Act, and Board Policy 6142.1, all California's public schools must provide comprehensive sexual health education to encourage the development of healthy attitudes of adolescent growth and development, body image, gender, sexual orientation, and relationships, and ensure that sexual health education does not promote outdated gender norms. And whereas the Student Success and Opportunity Act of 2013 strengthens protection of transgender students and affirm that all students should be recognized and participate in activities by their gender of identity. Whereas the district endorses training for educators and other school-related professionals to support all students dealing with the issue of sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. and gender expression. Whereas the district recognizes LGBTQ as a protected group and addresses discrimination based upon sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Whereas the district recognizes that education regarding LGBTQ issues increases understanding and cultivates acceptance of and respect for LGBTQ students. And whereas the month of June provides an opportunity to celebrate and value the identities and the contributions of the LGBTQ community. And whereas a knowledge of LGBTQ history for all students enables LGBTQ students, families, and educators to be supported by the district community and to uphold affirmative lives with dignity and respect. Whereas by recognizing Pride Month, the district demonstrates support of policies, practices, and curriculum that honors and respects LGBTQ students, staff, and their family. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education hereby designates June 2022 as Pride Month, and the district's, uh, the superintendent and all district staff to support policies, practices, curriculum that respects LGBTQ students and their families throughout the school year.
Thank you. Oops. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 12C, adoption of resolution 45 ordering a governing board member election.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education adopt resolution 45 ordering a governing board member election and waive the reading of the resolution as presented.
Second.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the second, Mr. Fritner. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero. 12D, approval of extension of the temporary substitute employee salary compensation increase.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education approve the extension of the temporary substitute employee salary compensation increase effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Agarokanian. Uh, any discussion?
Um, it just says, as the budget comes back, like, you know, this is great that we're extending it a year, but again, trying to see where we can, what the long term, I, you got, everybody's nodding, so thank you.
Thank you for that. All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries four, zero. We have pulled 12E. Move on to 12F, approval of administrative regulation 6141.5, advanced placement.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
It is my privilege to move, uh, board approval of the proposed revision of administrative regulation 6145.5, advanced placement, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Agarokanian. You might have just been louder than Mr. Fritner, but I did hear you, so. Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we get a?
Okay.
Can, yeah, just explain.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Pramo.
For those who haven't read the.
So, um, what I'd like to say is that this is, there has been a lot of work done on this, and, uh, I know it took a little longer than, um, maybe we expected, but our group in the policy subcommittee, um, really wanted to be thoughtful about this. To a large extent, what is presented in this language is the practice we have held for well over five years. So the, the caveat and the addition to the language is allowing for opportunities for students that may have received D grades in prerequisite courses to still access honors and AP with some remediation during the summer. So if you look at item three, it specifically talks about, uh, students who may have a D in a prerequisite course and, and the counseling they need to receive and, and the work they need to do during the summer in order to be able to move forward in the fall to access an honors or AP course. That has not been our practice before, but we wanted to provide those opportunities. So, um, this, this is really meaningful for me because I, I feel like what it does is codify what we've been doing already in practice, and it's kind of secures it by having it in the policy and having language around it. I do want to share with the board that just today and this morning, I did have some emails from our counselors at the secondary asking that we consider, in the language, we refer to our counselors as academic advisors. They prefer the word counselor, and I, I made a promise that I would bring that forward, uh, as a potential amendment to what is presented in front of you.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the maker of the motion, are you?
Absolutely. Fine, uh, I'm fine to accommodate that language in the motion.
And our second?
Second.
Okay. He agrees. So.
And if I?
Yes, please.
Um, I, this is a long time coming, um, but not easy, not an easy policy. But this looks out for kids in a real way. And I really respect teachers and, and, uh, those involved in instruction who worry about kids getting it and above their, uh, in over their heads. But as a student who was turned away from rigor because I got a B plus instead of an A, that changed my relationship with academics. And I am so proud of the educational leadership that is at this dais right now who pushed to expand opportunities in this moment, uh, and through this way. So I am wholeheartedly behind this. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Guceo, Dr. Pramo, Dr. Hill, and everybody who played a role in moving this forward because this takes care of kids. This is the educational leadership that takes guts to do, um, and, and I just couldn't be more proud to support this. I know it's an admin reg. I know it's not on our side of the books, but you know what? Like, this gets an extra, uh, extra gusto with this one. So thanks for taking care of our kids.
Well said.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you. So, all in favor, um, you're good? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries four, zero. Thank you. Yep, that is a big moment. Uh, 12G, second reading and approval of elementary school social science textbook.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move that the Board of Education adopt the Teachers Curriculum Institute Social Science Textbook Series to include Grade K, uh, Me and My World, ISBN 9781583710340. Grade 1, My School and My Family, ISBN 9781583710890. Grade 2, My Community, ISBN 9781583710968. Grade 3, California's Communities, ISBN 9781583714805. Grade 4, California's Promise, ISBN 9781537114829. Grade 5, America's Past, ISBN 9781583719947. Not to exceed $879,272 and 2020, and 22 cents out of the lottery textbook fund account strings, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for the second. And too bad we don't get paid by saying numbers, right?
There we go.
All right.
We'd have another budget crisis.
Yes. Most definitely. All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any discussion? Fabulous. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Thank you. Motion carries four, zero. 12H, adoption of middle school science textbook.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move that the Board of Education adopt, oh, by the way, previous item, thank you, Dr. Knopf, and everybody involved in that, uh, that process. It was a long one, so just thank you. Uh, I will move that, uh, the Board of Education approve the proposed science textbook for adoption as presented.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for the second, Dr. Agarokanian. Any discussion? It's really exciting to be adopting textbooks again. It seems like forever.
For everybody who asks, where's the lottery money? There it is.
There it is. Thank you so much. Uh, any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. 12I, ratification of contract with Hop Skip Drive for BUSD youth in transition.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education ratify the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and Hop Skip Drive to provide the occasional transportation to school for youth in transition. This agreement, uh, is effective from April 13th, 2022 to June 30th, 2022, and not to exceed $5,000. Invoices will be paid out of the American Rescue Plan funding, um, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Any discussion? Do you want, um, do we need an explanation, Dr. Hill, a little bit?
So typically, we provide metro passes and other forms of transportation for families. We do have some families that are residing outside of a near metro hub, so they do need this hop skip drive, uh, transportation. There is dedicated funding from the federal government for, uh, the stimulus funding that's dedicated for homeless families or families, um.
In transition.
Uh, that need these services right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero. And now, 12J, acceptance of gifts.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district and that the Board President convey appreciation to the donors.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. All in favor of, uh, approving the gift report, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Thank you so very much to our donors. Uh, tonight, we only, I shouldn't say only, we have three. Blackbaud Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $60 to be used for materials and supplies at Thomas Edison Elementary. Peter Lars Inc., also Cornerstone Photography, wishes to donate to the district $602.67 to be used as needed at Providencia, Providencia Elementary School. And the third one, an anonymous donor wishes to donate to the district $200 for the purchase of a prom dress for a student in transition in the Student Services Department. Thank you all very much for your generous and kind donations. It's greatly appreciated. Consent agenda.
President Tabit.
Oh. We did.
We did.
Four, zero. That's okay. Um, at least I remembered that we did it, so. Consent agenda.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move items 13, uh, consent calendar, items 13A through 13V, except for which items board members wish to pull.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Agarokanian. Any items need to be pulled? Awesome. All those in favor, please say aye of approving the consent agenda.
Aye.
And opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Okay. Request to address the Board, 14. Again, any group or individual representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board by completing a blue card, uh, request card, and turning to Ms. Clark. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent to the Board of Education. No virtual speakers this evening? Great. Our first speaker is James Morrison, followed by Linda Besson.
I didn't know I was going, um, before, before, um, caught me off guard there. How's everyone tonight? Great. Um, I just want to extend a heartfelt, um, warm gesture of gratitude towards the DEI program, uh, the DEI Committee, and, uh, for all of their hard work. And, um, I just wanted to, uh, start this off by saying that Stephanie McCoy is a, um, a true champion of that movement. I know firsthand, simply because, um, about a month ago, at Walt Disney Elementary School, um, my son, who's eight, was standing on the, uh, in a, the playground or that, at the play area or whatever, and, um, one of his friends was there with him, and he uttered the N-word around him. I know this because he came home that night and asked me, what is the N-word? So what is a black father to do, right? I gather my thoughts, try to stay away from the realm of anger, and I tried to explain to him the toxicity and the hatred that, that word derives from. And, uh, I also grieve his innocence because at this point, a line has been crossed. It was innocence, and now, welcome to the, the world of which this world, this N-word exists. So I have to explain this to my son with great anger. So fast forward, uh, to, I guess, the next day, I talked to, um, Molly over at Walt Disney Elementary, and, um, to, to my surprise, she had a, a learner's, a learner's heart. Uh, she was a student in that moment. Um, she didn't, uh, buckle under the pressure of white fragility. Uh, she actually, in fact, she wanted to learn more, how she could help. And she initiated a meeting between, um, me and, uh, the parent of the boy who uttered this word because not only did I grieve the, the loss of innocence for my son, but I also grieved the loss of innocence for the boy who uttered that word. You know, we're at, we're at a critical time in history where, uh, lines are being drawn and divisions are being made, right? Sides are being chosen, and hatred, um, is being acted upon, um, from heinous acts based on, um, falsehoods brought, brought by, um, uh, critical, critical race theory falsehoods or, uh, replacement theory, things of that nature. So I had the meeting with the parent, and we come to a resolution, and, you know, all is well, it ends well, right? But I just want to say that, um, the importance of Stephanie McCoy, for her to be, still be installed and for her to be renewed, her contract to be renewed, um, I can't speak highly enough of that, simply because she gives voice to the voiceless and defense to the defenseless. And anyone who is a part of a movement that needs a champion would know the importance of a person like Stephanie McCoy. And I'm just here tonight to testify on her behalf, and I, I am here as, uh, sort of a preemptive, preemptive, uh, notion to have her extended, if that's at all possible. If you can find some way, whether by magic or voodoo, to dig into the budget, to extend her contract, I would appreciate that because it would be, um, naive and almost idiotic to think that this will be the last time that, uh, a word like the N-word would be uttered in school grounds, or perhaps the F-word, or whatever word, you know, spawns hatred, would be spoken on our school grounds. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Linda Besson, followed by Polly Stenberg.
Good evening. This past Sunday, I read a tweet by Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis. She had a message for the world about what happened the day before. She wrote, "Eighteen years old and writing about white genocide before he went out to massacre black folks buying groceries, but tell me again how we don't need anti-racism education in our schools. We are seeing a massive campaign funded by an incomprehensible amount of money pushing hate and rage on young minds. This is a war that we must fight daily against racism and violence and hate because the loss of even one soul in this war could result in mass murder. This is a war over hearts and minds, and right now, all of you need to choose a side because this war must also be fought in our classrooms. Our kids are being bombarded with messaging on YouTube, in chat rooms, on social media, and so on, but where do children spend the most time? Where do they receive the most instruction, and where do we have the best chance to teach them that we are all the same at school? So let's stop and think about the message we are sending by considering the removal of our district DEI coordinator. When kids are told by forces that we can't control, that white is superior and white genocide is real, and those who are not like you are to be feared and hated and killed, do you really think the way to fight this, to fight against all of this, is to remove DEI from our schools? What are we telling white children and BIPOC children about what we value and who we value? How can we fight this war when we tell them, explicitly tell them, that... How can we fight this war when we tell them, explicitly tell them, that diversity, equity and inclusion don't matter? You need to choose a side. When we choose to teach them books that don't expand their hearts and minds, that don't reveal to them the experiences of others, not their color and not like them, we lose this war. When we demand to teach a book that is over sixty years old and was written by a white woman and centers a white male savior and we say this is enough to teach the black experience in America, we lose this war. When we refuse to expand our curriculum to include modern and diverse voices that center and amplify the black voice, the brown voice, the gay voice, the Asian voice, and a chorus of other voices, when we silence those voices, we lose this war. Why do you think the same destructive forces are now focused with a fierce hatred on our public schools? Because we are the main line of defense against them. You may say, but we wanna be neutral. We wanna support everyone. We don't wanna take sides on this. Well, even Sweden, after two hundred years of neutrality, has now realized you have to take a side. So you need to choose a side. Let's talk about how certain teachers insist that it is just fine to make students read aloud from books that contain the N-word. Because I have a story that relates to that. Last week, I went hiking in Griffith Park, as I do a few times a week. Above the old zoo area, someone had painted on a wall an obscenity and racial slur, F-N-word. I immediately contacted those I knew who could take action. Sure enough, the words were painted over within hours. But when a teacher forces children to read the N-word aloud in class, it normalizes that word. They have permission from an authority figure to say that word. They and their peers can now say that word to each other and it builds and it builds and it becomes part of the vocabulary and it goes out into the world and then someone feels they are empowered enough to paint it on a hiking trail. Do not continue to give ammunition to the enemy. Do not normalize what should never be normal, because it will escalate and there will be graffiti and it will show up in our schools, in our neighborhoods, at your door and Oliver Burbank, and then it won't be just words. It will be our worst nightmare come true. Can anyone here today assure me, guarantee to me and everyone here and everyone watching, that not one of the students in our school system is being fed ideology that has the potential to cause them to do what was done in Buffalo? If the answer to that is no, then you need to be concerned. You need to fund DEI and other anti-racism efforts and you need to support the staff who is trying for the first time in the history of this district to initiate these efforts. You need to take action, serious and consequential action. You need to choose a side. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Polly Stenberg, followed by Carmenita Heliger.
Good evening. I'm Polly Stenberg. My pronouns are she/her. Saturday, May fourteen, was one of the deadliest racist massacres in American history. Ten lives were stolen by an eighteen-year-old white supremacist terrorist. I am angry and I am heartbroken. We need to say the names of the lives stolen. Aaron Salter, Jr., age fifty-five. Celestine Cheney, age sixty-five. Roberta A. Drury, age thirty-two. Andre McNeil, age fifty-three. Catherine Massey, age seventy-two. Margus Morrison, age fifty-two. Hayward Patterson, age sixty-seven. Geraldine Tally, age sixty-two. Ruth Whitfield, age eighty-six. Pearl Young, age seventy-seven. These were ten beautiful human lives with families, partners, children, people who care for their community. May we join in community and do the necessary work to end white supremacy. All government entities, federal, state and city, need a current plan, staff list and budget assigned to confront white supremacy. That includes this governing body and the governing body of the City of Burbank. For this governing body, you must immediately take the necessary steps to renew the contract of our DEI consultant Stephanie McCoy. Next, you must work with all stakeholders involved in the budget process before budget adoption to determine where to find the budget to provide Ms. McCoy the staff she needs. The Destiny Education Project has follow-up meetings scheduled next week with both Senator Portantino and Assembly Member Laura Friedman to receive support for this issue, both of whom have thanked us for our efforts thus far. Statements are important and I am so grateful for the statement made tonight in favor of ending hate and discrimination of all types, including for our LGBTQ community, who are incredibly vulnerable as well. And the cross-sections especially of race and gender identity are highly vulnerable. But the statements and speaking is not enough, lip service is not enough. We need a steady stream of substantive budget explicitly dedicated to anti-racism and DEI. The Destiny Education Project looks forward to supporting this work every step of the way, including with the members of the BTA Executive Board and BTA at Large, members of CSEA and PTA. Anyone who has clarity and is ready to provide leadership on this issue, we have to work towards it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Carmenita Heliger.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Hill, Ms. Casao. As we can see tonight, DEI is important. I have children who are part of the LGBTQIA community, but I can't support them because I'm always protecting them from racism. I am furious and I am exhausted. I could not get my child out of bed to go to school this week after the shooting. She does not feel safe. In the past, I have tried and came here and, and I've tried asking, educating you and pleading for the correct and safe education of my children. And what has been the result? Our DEI consultant has no guarantee of a contract renewal. Tonight, I am drawing a line in the sand as deep and as red as the redlining scheme that created this racist, chaotic city that was once a sundowntown called Burbank. Sunday Congressman Eric Swalwell said, you either choose chaos or you choose community. I've come over and over again in what I have seen from our BTA President Diana Basta. She wants to militarize and have militarized police officers back in our schools to scare children into submission under the same white woman lie that they don't feel safe around black and brown children, instead of hiring psychologists to help them. I need for this Board to push back on her divisive and chaotic causing words. The same way you just did when pushing back on anti-LGBTQIA rhetoric. When given the chance to move anti-racism and DEI forward, how will you vote? I cannot keep my children safe. This world is on a mission to terrorize black and brown children and people as a whole. If you don't stand up for my children now and vote to renew Ms. McCoy's contract, to keep this district pushing towards DEI, I will spend my every waking hour removing all of you. And you will feel as scared as my daughter is every day when she goes to school and she's called a nigger. You will feel it. I'm tired and I'm exhausted. You will do it as necessary to make sure every child is safe in your schools. You will push back on all of these teachers who are not there to provide a safe haven for all of our children. And you will amplify the positions that have been there for our children and amplify those teachers who fight and make sure our children are safe there. You have to choose between chaos and community. This is the last time I'm gonna say that.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Superintendent comments?
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to the speakers. I wanna thank you all for your passionate testimony and your advocacy for the work on DEI. I know that we are all committed as a school district to continue looking at the work we're doing around diversity, equity and inclusion. I wanna reassure you that we all are committed, that this is an ongoing process. Uh, as far as specifically on how we're investing in the budget in DEI, uh, that's a conversation we're gonna be having over the next month. Uh, we've been analyzing the survey data from parents, students and staff. Uh, we're gonna be coming back with a strategic plan on how we can continue this work and moving it forward. Uh, that's gonna happen in parallel, uh, with the budget process. Just since it, it came up a couple of times, we did allocate one-time funding this year for a DEI consultant to help guide us through this work that has just begun, but the key outcome of that work is a strategic plan so that we know how we can prioritize what we're gonna do moving forward. And that's what that budget conversation will focus on. Um, there's a lot we need to do. It's just starting. Um, but there's also gonna be limited resources, so we're gonna have to make those decisions on how we allocate those resources going forward and we will be doing that in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, who, are there one of you? Go right ahead. If you're okay, just go in out of order. I just wanna make sure they're okay. Let me go first. Okay.
Um, because a specific name was mentioned, it becomes a personnel issue, so I'm gonna stay out of that, but I do wanna thank everybody for contributing. Uh, and for saying, uh, for specifically stating, you know, what priorities do you wanna see funded in the budget? I appreciate that. Um, I, I look forward to the conversation ahead, but beyond that, uh, because we're tying it to one specific name, it's a personnel issue and I'd prefer not to go there.
Uh, I'll agree with my colleague. Uh, I was going to reference the same thing at, you know, that is personnel issue and a budget issue that will be continuing. Thank you all for sharing your thoughts, especially Mr. Morrison, for testifying your experience. Uh, and I think we have shown that we are, uh, committed and I realize I, I forgot who said, you know, statements are one thing, actions another. I'll reflect on the comment I made earlier regarding LGBTQ. While we've been an ally, I, you know, I may have more to do and we will a- always continue to look to, to that. And, you know, and, and continue working on the, the DEI plan. We thank all of you for your participation in that. And, you know, we'll try and move that, you know, continue making progress on that. I, I think the, the, the shooting that happened in Buffalo affected all of us. I, I don't know how it couldn't affect you if you were paying any attention at all. Um, and the fact that it was an eighteen-year-old who did it and you, and you're, yes, you have to wonder, you know, what drove him to this ideology? And, and we can only continue to try and make progress, make sure that doesn't happen in our district and, and keep working on that. And, and, and we will. I, I have every confidence that everyone here expects to continue doing that.
So I do wanna thank all of our speakers and, you know, when we started the DEI Committee, I told people this is gonna take years, but at the same time, it's also gonna take experts and people who understand and have done this before, but also have been affected individually. I'm getting tired of people just coming forward because they've read two books or articles and all of a sudden they're the experts. I wouldn't, and I'm someone who's been discriminated against consistently. And I wouldn't even talk about some of these issues when it comes to remedying it, because it's a long, it's an issue that's, that's, that's gonna take time. And that's why we're still seeing, you know, what we're seeing. And to me, it's very common sense. If someone is the expert, we should continue to work with them. I had, did have the privilege of meeting Ms. McCoy for breakfast and really talking to her about who she is and her understanding of what my struggles have been. Assured me that experts like her are needed, because I don't want my son to be where your son is. And he's at that tender age too. And I'm not gonna be the person, nor do I think that because this person has done a little bit of work and all of a sudden we have a guidance, that's enough for us. No. This is something that we've worked very hard. We're not even getting started yet and I think we need the experts to be there. And I'm gonna fight very hard to make sure that we keep this individual. I think we need this person. And then we need to continue, or else we're just wasted a year of funding, because this is not easy. People look at this, they look at surveys, they look at data. It's not that simple. You have not been discriminated against because of your color, ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion. It's difficult. And it takes more than just, you know, surveys and a little bit of studies to do, address this concern. I'm tired of people just coming and saying, well, you know, we've started this and here it is and here's the solution. It is not easy, because as you can see, what's happening in our country now, we're kind of going backwards again. And part of the reason is because experts were not allowed to come forward and address these concerns. Because at one point, we just did a little study and everything is fine now. Doesn't work that way. So I hear what some of you are saying. I think we need to have a bigger conversation. And, and there is funding out there for this. There is funding. And I hope that our Assembly Member and our own Senator, who's the Chair of the Appropriation, we have one hundred billion dollar surplus in our budget. And this issue, if you don't address this issue, that means you don't care about our children. Thank you. This is a very important issue and I think we, we can get funding for it if we fight hard for it.
Thank you. Did you, did I, you, you did. Sorry, I'm tired. Okay. Um, well, thank you for our speakers tonight, for staying and giving us your, your thoughts and opinions. I do wanna add to, oh, let me find it. You know, it's interesting, when I spoke about student athletes earlier, a parent brought to my attention that there are many students who are going to move on after high school and play at the community college level. And they're not included in signing day. Dr. Paramo, can we make sure going forward that those students, I know they don't officially sign a letter of intent, but that they can participate and be recognized as well. So, let me make sure I get these, these names right. So, uh, Heidi Collins will be playing volleyball at Santa Barbara City College next year. And her, um, I don't have Liliana's last name, was part of the, uh, the swim team from John Burrows and she'll be, uh, going to Valley and participating in swim there. So thank you to both those young ladies. And I also know there's a, there's, um, 'cause I happen to know, again, the family, Becken Spence from Burbank High, who's going to Pasadena City College to play football. So. So, same thing. Anyway, thank you, and we have some retiring folks that I need to announce their name. Sally Ann Cutrell is retiring, Pamela Cohen, Christine Tutak, Dorothy Margave, and Kim Anderson. And on the CSEA side, we have Michael DiCaro, Nina Menachikyanian, I'm sorry for that, I think I did the best I could, Sima Nazim. Thank you for your years of service, and we wish you the best of luck in your retirement. Thank you so very much. And I think that's all I have, and so, meeting is adjourned.